All right. Can everybody hear out there? We had some technical difficulties last time, so fingers crossed. Looks like we got those cured. We good? We good tech team? Okay. We're live. All right. I'd like to welcome everyone here in the chamber and those watching at home via livestream and call the October 28th, 2025 regular meeting of the Board of Education to order with all board members present. And I'm reaching for my gavel, but I'm going to pin this meeting in. And now we will move precipitously to our flag ceremony. The Point Loma High School Navy JROTC Color Guard will present the colors. Please stand for the presentation of the colors. All right. Trustee Bazza, would you like to lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the republic of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. All right. Next up is A3, our land acknowledgement. The land acknowledgement is a traditional custom that dates back centuries in many Native American nations and communities. Our land acknowledgement was developed in partnership with local Kumeya leaders. Students from the San Diego School of Creative and Performing Arts prepared the following video to show our respect for the Kumeya people, who are the original stewards of the land our school district occupies. Roll the video.
Now known as San Diego. Despite the attempted genocide and ongoing impacts of colonization, the Kumeya spirit remains unbroken and their traditions continue to thrive as they carry the memories of their ancestors, who bravely resisted cultural erasure and fought to protect their land and way of life.
In honoring their legacy, we pledge to uphold their cultural heritage and right to safeguard their sacred connection to the land for future generations.
With gratitude and strength, we stand with the Kumeya, embracing the past while forging a brighter tomorrow.
Okay. We will now move to item B, adoption of the agenda. We have a full docket and we'll hear a variety of items tonight, including three charter petition renewals and a student outcomes focused governance monitoring report on student wellness, chronic absenteeism reduction. I'd like a motion, if I can get one, to adopt today's agenda as published with items H1, H2, and H3, the charter school petition renewals, to be heard next. Is there a motion? Sabrina Bazza, trustee Bazza, rather, with the motion, and trustee Wen with the second. All right. We have a motion and a second. Student trustees, please vote. All other trustees, please vote. That motion finally passes unanimously with student trustees concurring. All right. We've got an agenda. Ms. Stoltz, can you please provide information for public speakers about today's meeting protocols?
Yes. Today's meeting of the Board of Education is a business meeting that is conducted in public, and board members will not engage in dialogue with members of the audience. Board bylaw 1025 sets the time limit for public comment on agenda items at 10 minutes per side, pro and con, or 20 minutes total. Speakers will be able to provide testimony at the beginning of the appropriate agenda item or at the end of the meeting for non-agenda comment. Please listen for your name to be called. Speakers are listed and called in the order received. When your name is called, please come to the podium to speak. Speakers participating via Zoom will be asked to unmute when their name is called. If you are unable to unmute yourself, we will call the next speaker. Please follow along with the agenda so that you know when your item is coming up for discussion. When you begin speaking, the green light below my name on the dais indicates that the timer has started. When the light turns yellow, you will have one minute remaining. A buzzer will indicate that your time has expired. If you have not yet done so and would like to sign up for in-person public comment, iPads are available in the back of the auditorium and in the lobby.
Thank you, Marty. We will now consider items H1 through H3. Those are charter renewals. We last meeting had our charter extravaganza, many compelling folks providing testimony, and we will now move to the action portion of that. This is the second reading. And the first one we will hear is H1, Innovations Academy Charter School, and for their charter petition renewal. I'd like to ask Deirdre Walsh, our director of charter schools, of our charter schools office, to come to the dais and present the item. And there she is. Welcome.
Good evening. Oh, can you hear? I don't know. Thank you. All right. So this item is for the renewal of the Innovations Academy charter. Staff is recommending that the board approve the charter for a six-year term beginning July 1, 2026. Innovations was classified as a high-performing charter school by the California Department of Education, and based on this performance level and per California Education Code, Innovations may be granted a five-, six-, or seven-year renewal. In the staff report, table two provides an overview of Innovations. Innovations is seeking renewal of its charter for a seven-year term. In making the recommendation for a six-year renewal, district staff reviewed the Innovations renewal petition, the district's AB 1505 implementation plan, and the school's operations during the most recent charter term. Table five summarizes the criteria from the AB 1505 implementation plan, which was used to determine the length of the high-performing charter school's renewal term and the outcomes specific to Innovations. Per the implementation plan, a school must meet all criteria listed in the seven-year term column to be granted a seven-year term. Innovations met eight of the 10 criteria in the seven-year term. And then moving to the renewal standards. California Education Code established a three-tier performance-based classification system for renewing charter schools that are not Dashboard Alternative School Status Schools to determine if a charter school is high, middle, or low performing. In March 2025, the state determined that Innovations is classified as high performing. To be classified as high performing, the charter school must have met one of two criteria. Criteria one is that the school received the two highest performance levels schoolwide on all of the state indicators for which it receives performance levels, or criteria two, that for all measurements of academic performance, the school received performance levels schoolwide that are the same or higher than the state average, and for a majority of subgroups performing statewide below the state average, received performance levels that are higher than the state average. Innovations met the requirements of criteria two, in that for ELA and math, they had schoolwide performance levels that were the same or higher than the state average, and had performance levels that were higher than the state average in all numerically significant subgroups that performed below the state average. Tables six and seven summarize the dashboards results for 23 and 24 for Innovations. Table nine summarizes the projected enrollment for the next six years for the school. We also did a review of the school's finances. To ensure fiscal stability, district staff applied a more conservative approach to its enrollment projections, beginning with the 26-27 school year, and used an assumed enrollment of 440. Based on the adjusted figures, the multi-year financial projections indicate the school will operate in deficit across out-years of the charter term, but despite that, their ending balance is anticipated to remain above the district's minimum required reserve. Thank you.
Thank you, Deirdre. Do I have a motion to approve item H1? A motion from trustee Whitehurst Payne. Do I have a second? Trustee Barrera, I saw, or Vice President, rather, Barrera with the second. We have a motion and a second. We will now proceed to our public comment. We have, we'll take up to 10 minutes of public comment on this item. Ms. Stoltz, are there any speakers on item H1?
Yes, we have. We have two speakers on H1. Christine Kuglin and Emily Lipscom-Luskum. You have a total of 10 minutes.
Good afternoon, members of the board. My name is Emily Luskum, and I have the privilege of serving as Assistant Director at Innovations Academy this year. My journey with IA began back in 2011, when I first joined as a sixth-grade teacher. I remained a teacher there for the next 10 years. From the very beginning, I was inspired by the school's philosophy, a place where creativity, inquiry, and student-centered learning are not just encouraged, but embedded into the heart of every classroom. In 2022, I relocated to Washington and stepped into an administrative role at another charter school. Those three years provided me with valuable perspective and experience. However, what stood out most to me during that time was the realization of just how special Innovations Academy truly is. The culture of positive discipline and restorative practices that defines IA is not something easily replicated. Over the past 18 years, it has created an environment where students feel safe, valued, and empowered to take ownership of their learning. Over the years, I have witnessed countless students make remarkable academic progress, and I've seen them flourish in their confidence and self-belief. They learn to take risks, to think creatively, and to understand that mistakes are simply part of the learning process and part of being human. This is the kind of education that not only builds scholars, but also resilient, compassionate, and curious individuals. Returning this year as Assistant Director has felt like coming home to a community that not only believes in academic growth, but also in the growth of the whole child. At IA, learning extends far beyond the classroom, whether it's through exploratory field trips, project-based learning, or hands-on inquiry. Students are encouraged to see the world around them as their classroom. They learn to ask questions, seek solutions, and connect their experiences to deeper understanding. I wholeheartedly believe in Innovations Academy and its approach to education. I respectfully ask that you support a seven-year renewal so that we can continue to nurture generations of students who not only achieve academically, but also become thoughtful, engaged members of their communities. Thank you for your time.
Good evening. Honorable members of San Diego Unified Board, I know how hard you work. The work you do is incredible. I'm here from Innovations Academy. I'm the director. I'm also a founder, so I have been directing Innovations Academy for 18 years, and I love and I'm passionate about the work I do. Additionally, I'm here just to mention the fact that I think we deserve a seven-year renewal, and I wanted to explain why. I sent some letters to you, so you may have seen them and emails, but just in case. The rubric you have has 10 areas on it, and we met, as Deirdre said, who I love. I love Deirdre. By the way, the charter school office is amazing. That two of the areas were in question. One of them is English language learners, that the district is requesting that a small charter school like Innovations Academy match the English language learner population of an entire district like San Diego. I think that's nearly impossible, but I want to mention that our English language learner population does match or exceed all of the San Diego Unified District Schools in our neighborhood, in our area, and that seems like a better comparison to me. Regarding the other area is socio-economically disadvantaged students, and though we do not match the district demographics 100%, we do, our special ed population far exceeds the district's special ed population, so I think our demographics are not going to match. I don't think San Diego, I don't think Innovations Academy is ever going to have the same demographics as San Diego Unified, but I think comparing us to schools around us would probably be a fairer approach. And I also think looking at other challenges we have, you might have a larger socio-economically disadvantaged population, which is a challenge and brings its own challenges, and we have a much larger population of special ed students, which is a challenge and brings its own challenges, and we each stand to our challenges and do the best we can to meet them, and I think if you look at the test scores of our special ed students, for example, you will see how we are exceeding the norm in that area, as well as our reclassification of English language learner students, which we may have, we might have more of if we weren't reclassifying them at such a high rate. So I just thought that was something that you should know, so that you can think about offering us a seven-year renewal. We actually deserve a 20-year renewal, but that's not on the table, so we'll take seven. But anyway, I just wanted to bring that up to your attention, because I know you have a lot going on in your own district, and it's hard to look at and know all of the data. I really appreciate your time. Thank you for hearing me out.
All right. Thank you. Do any of the trustees have any questions or comments? Okay. Seeing none. We're good? Okay. Seeing none. We'll move to a vote? Okay. Student trustees, please vote. All other trustees, please vote. I didn't ever saw it flash there. That motion passes unanimously with student trustees concurring. Thank you so much for coming tonight. Okay. We will now move to item H2, Altus Charter Schools Charter Petition Renewal and Material Revision to Merge Altus Schools ADEO Into Altus Schools Charter School of San Diego. Ms. Walsh, please present the item.
Thank you. As noted, this item is for the renewal of the charter for Altus Schools Charter School of San Diego for a five-year term beginning July 1, 2026, and a material revision submitted concurrently to merge Altus Schools ADEO into Altus Schools Charter School of San Diego, add grades, it should be TK5, not 6, to the Altus Charter School of San Diego charter, and surrender the charter of Altus School ADEO as of June 30, 2026. Should the Board of Education not approve the material revision, it is recommended that the charter renewal for Charter School of San Diego be granted. The renewal petition identifies the current Charter School San Diego and ADEO sites, as well as two future sites that will replace current sites. All of the sites are included in this staff report. Tables three and four provide an overview of Charter School San Diego and ADEO. Both of the schools are Dashboard Alternative School Status, or DAS, schools. To meet eligibility criteria, DAS schools must have an unduplicated pupil count of at least 70% high-risk students, and we've noted those high-risk student groups in the staff report. Per Education Code, DAS schools are exempt from the three-tiered performance-based classification system for other renewing charter schools. In determining whether to grant a charter renewal for a DAS school, the chartering authority shall consider the school's performance on the state and local indicators and their performance on the alternative metrics. Per Education Code, the chartering authority is required to meet with the charter school to discuss alternative metrics to be considered. District staff met with the charter school in 2022 and mutually agreed to 16 alternative metrics that would be used for purposes of renewal for both Charter School of San Diego and ADEO. Regarding the school's performance on the state and local indicators, per the 23-24 dashboards, Charter School San Diego performed better than or similar to the state in ELA, EL progress, suspension rate, chronic absenteeism, and graduation rate, and received standard met for all local indicators in both years. Charter School San Diego and ADEO's school-wide performance on the 23- and 24 dashboards is summarized in tables 7 and 8. And their performance on the 16 alternative metrics established for purposes of renewal are summarized in tables 9 and 10, and the details of the outcomes for each of the metrics were attached to the staff report as exhibits A and B. As reflected in table 9, Charter School of San Diego fully met 13 metrics, partially met two metrics, and data was not available for one of the metrics. And ADEO fully met or substantially met 15 of the metrics, and data was not available for one of the metrics. Table 12 summarizes Charter School San Diego's projected enrollment for the next five years. Review of the school's finances was done. In addition to reviewing the projections provided by the school, district, the district staff applied a more conservative approach to enrollment projections, as shown in the tables, and the school has sufficient funds to satisfy the district's minimum reserve requirements.
Thank you, Deirdre. Do we have a motion on H2? Trustee Bazza, a second? I'm sorry. Oh, yes. Okay. Let's check on that. I'm sorry. Oh, you mean on the, yes. You want to make sure that it's TK through 5. Is that what your question is?
Sorry. To clarify, in the staff report 2B, we have add grades TK6 to the Altus Charter School of San Diego charter. They actually already serve grade 6, so this would be adding grades TK through 5.
I see. Okay. Great. Thank you for the clarification. All right. I have a motion from trustee Bazza, and I'm looking for a second. I see, I see a second from Ashley, trustee, oh my gosh. Ordas. Ordas. I have it stored as a Spanish-language last name for some reason. It trips me up. Ordas. I'll just say Ordas, and I'll never forget it again. Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Let's, we'll now take our 10 minutes of public comment. There are no comments. Okay. That's wonderful. Do any of the trustees have any comments or questions? I just have a question with regard to the merger. I mean, it seems if that's useful to them, and we don't see any flags with that, just want to confirm that with you since I, yeah.
Yes, we see the merger as being an efficient step for them. They are similar programs. They're both DAS. They're operated by the same corporation. They serve some overlapping grade levels, so it's really, I think, a benefit operationally and for families to be under a single charter school.
All right. You heard it from Deirdre. We have a motion and a second. We have had, we have had whatever discussion we needed, and we will then move to a vote. Student trustees, please vote. All remaining trustees, please vote. That motion passes unanimously with student trustees concurring. Congratulations. Okay. We will now move to item H3, which is the renewal of charter petition for E3 Civic High. Ms. Walsh, you're back. Please present the item.
Thank you. Yes, so renewal of E3 Civic High charter. Staff is recommending that the board approve the charter for a five-year term beginning July 1, 2026. Table 2 provides an overview of E3. For renewal purposes for non-DAS charter schools, California Education Code established that three-tier performance-based classification system. E3 was determined by the state to be a middle-performing charter school. Middle-performing tier includes all schools that have not been classified as either low-performing or high-performing, and for middle-performing schools, the chartering authority shall consider the school-wide performance and performance of all subgroups served by the charter school. The chartering authority shall consider clear and convincing evidence, as demonstrated by verified data showing the school achieved measurable increases in academic achievement or strong post-secondary outcomes, as defined by college enrollment persistence and completion rates equal to similar peers. Specific to E3, district staff determined that per the 2024 dashboard, E3 performed the same or better than the state in school-wide measures of academic performance for ELA, college career readiness, and graduation rates. E3 improved outcomes in all four subgroups included on both the 23- and 24 dashboards in both ELA and math, and per the 2024 dashboard, E3 performed better than the state based on color assignment and/or distance from standard in three subgroups in ELA. Tables 5 and 6 summarize those dashboard reports and outcomes. And then, as mentioned, per the statute, the chartering authority is required to consider verified data. E3 provided verified data to support its post-secondary results. As reflected in table 7, E3 has an average college-going rate that is at least equal to the state's average, and per table 8, their college persistence rates are higher, are a higher average rate than California and the nation. Table 11 summarizes their projected enrollment for the next five years. Review of the school's finances was also done, and to ensure fiscal stability, district applied adjusted projections that are more conservative for enrollment. We did the forecast with an enrollment of 365 students and a 92% ADA rate. Based on the adjusted figures, the multi-year financial projections indicate that the school will operate in a deficit across out-years. Despite these deficits, the ending fund balance is anticipated to remain above the district's required minimum reserve through the 28-29 school year. We do note that if enrollment does not improve, the school is projected to face cash flow challenges beginning in the 29-30 school year, with the fund balance fully depleted by fiscal year 30-31. And so without those enrollment increases or cuts to expenses to balance the budget, they may not meet minimum reserve requirements.
All right. Thank you, Deirdre. Is there a motion to approve item H3? Vice President Barrera, trustee Hazen. I have a motion and a second. We'll now take up to 10 minutes of public comment on this item. Ms. Stoltz, do we have any public comment?
Yes, we have two speakers, Brett Taylor and Ginny Merrifield. You have a total of 10 minutes.
Thank you. Good evening, President Bagula and Superintendent, I'm sorry, try that again, President Patterson, Superintendent Bagula, other board members, and our professional charter office staff, Deirdre and Rick. My name is Ginny Merrifield, and I have the honor of serving as the Chair of the Board of E3 Civic High. On behalf of our entire community, our students, our families, our staff, and the board, I'd like to express our sincere gratitude to the charter office for your recommendation for a five-year renewal. This recommendation affirms the hard work, growth, and dedication of our team and the vibrant learning community, the vibrant learning environment that E3 provides to students in the heart of downtown San Diego. Since our last renewal, E3 has continued to strengthen its academic programs, deepen partnerships that connect students to real-world learning, and renew our commitment to equity, innovation, and student success. We're proud of our graduates who leave E3 ready for college, workforce, and life. Thank you for recognizing this progress and for your ongoing collaboration and support. It's very valuable to us. We look forward to building on this momentum and continuing to serve as a model for what is possible when schools and districts work together to empower every student to thrive. Thank you.
Good evening, board. Thank you for your time this evening. 12 years ago, a unique partnership between San Diego Unified, the City of San Diego, and the San Diego Library Foundation started a really innovative opportunity, which was to start a high school inside of a public library. Still innovative to this day, 12 years later. But I think what's not always recognized is that that innovation exceeds simply being a facilities, shared facilities usage, and it's really was an opportunity to be a community school with unique partnerships, looking at how a high school can function in an urban environment. So E3 Civic High had community schools in its DNA before community schools was a term we even talked about. With your approval of this five-year recommendation from the charter office, it will allow us to continue to push what a community school can be. Up until now, my career has been on, through, before my time here at E3, with traditional school districts, and so I can tell you, there's really an advantage to having charters like San Diego Unified approves, to push the boundaries of innovation and share those with others so that all schools can benefit. And we are committed to that at E3 and continuing to support all the work that all of you do. So we hope that you approve this recommendation, that we can move forward with continuing to build a great to build a great school. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, do any of the trustees have any questions or comments? All right, seeing none, we will move to a vote. Student trustees, please vote. All other trustees, please vote. That motion passes unanimously with student trustees concurring. All right. Returning to our published agenda, we will now hear item C1, a report from the Student Advisory Board member, Harry Park. Harry, please step up the dice and provide your report. Yes, yeah, come on up. Trustee Hazen, could you make sure he got the mic? Yeah, there we go. Proceed.
Hello, everyone. Today I'll be going over the key topics discussed yesterday at the Student Advisory Board meeting on October 28th, focusing on AI usage, student hub update, San Diego Unified School District anti-vaping, and student wellness. So last, two weeks ago, AI was brought up again here, and it was continued yesterday as well. This is one of the biggest topics facing our school right now because it's so radical. On one side, as, I mean, pretty much everyone knows, it can be an incredible resource. It can help students study, brainstorm, get tutoring-style helps when teachers or tutors aren't available. It can make learning more efficient, it can make flashcards for you, and AI will eventually be part of the future workforce. So hopefully, it would be best to teach students how to use it effectively without getting rid of their critical thinking skills. But as we all know, it's also very easy to overuse, it's not always credible, it doesn't always tell you that you are wrong in a very critical manner, it could be self-deceiving, and there are concerns about it weakening writing skills, especially in middle-schoolers and high-schoolers, as well as problem-solving abilities. So we went over a couple of policy proposals for elementary, middle, and high school. For elementary school students who are using school district-issued Chromebooks, they should not be using AI under pretty much any circumstance. This was pretty much consensus. You know, they should be writing essays by hand, and if they're going to use how to use a computer, they don't need to be using AI to write their essays. They're elementary school students. Handwriting essays is a skill that should not be phased out completely in favor of digital writing because handwriting is still incredibly important. Middle schools as well, they also use mostly school district-issued computers, and so if we can enforce a policy, it would not be very difficult to block it. And it should not be used in middle school either, considering that they lack the critical thinking skills to even use AI effectively to its full potential. And it was brought up that they might still use it at home, like they still might use it at home for an essay, but it could, this could just be an excuse or another way to have more essays done in class so that they don't have to do as much homework for English when they get home. So maybe, maybe that is a use out of, that can come out of this. So yeah, the less homework for middle-schoolers so they can focus on other activities. Yes. And for high-schoolers, we can, this is probably the best time when they can start, you know, learning it because they've already learned how to think, they know how to write properly at this point to some extent, and so we would like them to have the emotional maturity to use AI responsibly. Several ideas were put forth, and there actually is apparently a class in some schools on, or like a class on like, that allows AI usage and instructs students how to use artificial intelligence. So a class or a lecture on what responsible usage entails, maybe into far future, maybe not now because it's expensive, but having an educational large language model trained on reputable sources and cited journals without any of the influence of corporations to have their like political influence into it, hopefully that would be the best way of still keeping all the benefits of using AI without having to deal with, dealing with outside influence that we should not want in our school. And there's a lot of, as, it's pretty obvious, it gets a lot of its information from biased sources, and yeah, it would be best if we could have an education AI model, which is possible. All right. Next, we discussed the student hub. So we had an intern from San Diego Met, I believe, and it's a part, the student hub is a part of the San Diego Unified School District website that has multiple points of information. Currently, it's being updated to have a cleaner UI and better compatibility with different devices. The eventual goal for it is to have school websites with a button on it so they can redirect it to this San Diego Unified School District page, and it has resources on college, has resources on like, you know, drug use, has resources on a lot of different things that students would, you know, it would be good if students can know that such a resource existed, especially if they feel uncomfortable looking at these things, or they don't want to talk about it in front of their peers. So it is being developed. The next one was vaping. So I think it's pretty much well-known, there's a lot of, unfortunately, a lot of vaping in high school, and even in some middle-schoolers from Student Advisory Board have reported seeing vaping in their schools. There's two sides. On one side, people believe that districts should take a firmer stance, clear consequences like fines, testing, or required rehab. Holding students accountable and discouraging vaping altogether is a strategy being used in a lot of schools, and a lot of people support it. Furthermore, there have been suggestions to communicate with parents on vaping and its attempts to get rid of the problem beyond a school campus, and more on that later. The other side of students believe that the focus should be on support, not punishment. A suspension won't really solve the vaping issue, they'll just vape at home, and even if a student is, you know, they can get rid of, they don't have to vape at school anymore because they can control their urges. The symptoms of withdrawal from vaping, they include cravings and difficulty concentrating, and so they would still not be at their full academic potential that they could be. So it's not just an issue that can be solved at home, sorry, just at school. The addictive nature of nicotine needs some sort of treatment, whether that's rehab, counseling, or, you know, whatever. And again, I think both sides of this, like both sides of punishment or nurturing, they both agree that this should also extend to the parents as well because vaping is a holistic issue that, you know, students need to be free from vaping both in school and out of school in order for them to do the best they can academically. It needs to be a holistic effort. So there are consent, as for how we could, like further steps that we could take to reduce vaping, there's a consensus on making a campaign against vaping more personal. Instead of a lot of the sterilized and commercial-style lectures, maybe, you know, invite people who have struggled really with vaping to share stories. It doesn't need to be a member of our school, it doesn't need to be a member of the school district or whatever, it could just be someone who's willing to talk about what they went through, and hopefully this provides support for kids who are currently vaping so that, you know, there's a way out of this, there's a way that you can deal with symptoms of withdrawal, you know, there's, there's ways that you can hopefully get vaping free, and hopefully they know how bad it really is while at the same time not feeling completely hopelessly lost against it. And the last topic was student wellness, balancing, I mean, this was gone over briefly, but balancing academics, extracurriculars, and rest is something that all, all people in San Diego Unified School District study with. Many students feel overwhelmed, and others feel like they don't have enough outlets for stress relief or mental health support. And student wellness is not something that can be tracked very easily through metrics like academic performance because there are many high-achieving academic students who still deal with issues at home or still deal with stress due to the amount of activities they have. And on the one side, the district actually has several wellness resources like the student hub mentioned earlier, but not all students know about it or how to access them. So communication and visibility, like links through the student hub, could potentially help this issue, and this can be endorsed through Instagram, social media, like flyers and what, et cetera, to let people know that there are resources out there if you're not, if you're mentally unhealthy. That is all.
Wow, Harry, that was, that was a lot better than AI could do. That was a wonderful overview. All right, we will now move to items C2 and C3. First, the first of which is a resolution in support of the City of San Diego's Due Process Safety and Equity Ordinance. And resolution C3, which is in support of Senate Bill 672, the Youth Rehabilitation and Opportunity Act. Is there a motion to approve both items, C2 and C3? Trustee Wires Payne, and a second from trustee Bazo. We have a motion and a second. Ms. Stoltz, are there any public speakers on these items?
Yes, we have two speakers on C3, Mary Grillo and Pablo Essencio. You each have three minutes.
Welcome, you can come up to the podium.
Good evening. My name is Mary Grillo, and I'm a volunteer with the Second Chance Coalition, which is a coalition of organizations that range from business, labor, faith, social justice, and environmental. And we all support SB 672, and I'm here to ask you to support it as well. Young people between the ages of 18 and 25 should be held accountable for their actions, but young people also have a tremendous capacity for change, redemption, and genuine rehabilitation. This bill recognizes both of those important realities by granting a young person sentenced to life without the possibility of parole, the right to a parole hearing after serving 25 years. SB 672 is a common sense approach to California youth sentencing that is currently at odds with decades of research showing that the human brain does not fully develop until the mid-20s. A young person's reduced culpability is relevant when examining their criminal behavior, as is their enormous capacity for change. It costs about $133,000 a year to incarcerate one person in California. If that person has served time and demonstrated fitness to re-enter society, that money could be better spent on education, healthcare, or affordable housing. Multiple higher courts in California have urged the legislature to address this issue. The California Senate did just that by passing SB 672 in June of 2025, and I am here to ask you to please vote yes on this resolution. Thank you.
Good morning, everyone, or good evening, everyone. My name is Pablo Essencio. I stand before you not just as a UC San Diego graduate in business, but also as a Triton Underground scholar leader that provides services for formerly incarcerated people through the university system, particularly the UC system. But as someone who essentially understands the transformative power of education and second chances that benefited me personally. As a young person, I made choices that led to my incarceration, but through education, rehabilitation, and support of my community, I rebuilt my life. I went from being a youth in CUSC to working as a firefighter through Cal Fire, completing more than 20 rehabilitative programs, and today pursuing my MBA program at the Rady School of Business. I now work alongside nonprofits, universities, and other advocates to expand the opportunities of those who deserve a real shot and represent real change. Senate Bill 67, the Youth Rehabilitation Opportunity Act, is exactly about that hope, to provide someone who really is accountable for their actions and changes an opportunity to be released, not a guaranteed release. It provides a rigorous parole review after 25 years for people who were sentenced to life without parole between the ages of 18 and 25, recognizing what science has proven. Young people are still growing and have the ability to change and change into a productive human being. California youth offender parole programs have shown already exceptional low recidivism rates among those given second chances. This is about a smart investment in our communities. Every dollar we redirect from endless incarceration towards education, re-entry, and support makes California safer and stronger. It reflects the values San Diego Unified has long upheld, restorative justice, youth empowerment, and believing in potential of every young person. I am the living proof that if someone gives the opportunity to rebuild and change, people in, with through the SB 672, will be, provided that change, will show this community, their families, their ability to change. They grant to me the opportunities through their own leeways to change and to grow, and I took advantage of that in every way. So I hope you guys also consider and hight do and allow the next generation of youth that were, took the wrong path to make a difference and make a difference in our society and our community. Thank you very much.
All right, we have a motion and a second. We've heard from the public. Do any of the trustees have any questions or comments on this item? Trustee Wires Payne.
Thank you for coming down to share with us. One of my Rotary brothers, Bill Payne, is with the entity Second Chance. I think someone was here from Second Chance Organization, and we support giving people the opportunity to rehabilitate themselves and to get out into society and be productive citizens. So thank you for taking the time to come and share, and if you know Bill, tell him he should have been here today. I know we're going to vote for it, aren't we? Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Wires Payne. Vice President Barrera.
Yeah, thank you, President Pedersen, and thank you, Mary and Pablo, and Dorothy, for being here. It's important for us as an educational institution to strongly support this bill, really for a couple of basic reasons. As, as our speakers have shared with us, we want people to have a reason to pursue an education, to have an incentive to say, if I pursue education, I've got a shot at going out and, and being a contributor to society. And by creating that opportunity, this bill does that. But also to, you know, Mary Grillo's point, every dollar that we save from not incarcerating, somebody can go right back into our public school system, and that is happening with the Learning Communities for School Success Program, which channels savings from people who have no longer been incarcerated right into efforts like reducing chronic absenteeism and mental health and wellness support in our, in our public schools. So I know that this is a campaign that's going on up and down the state, and I hope that other school boards, other education institutions come and support this bill.
Thank you, Vice President Barrera. No comment? I will just say briefly on item C2, which my colleague, Vice President Barrera and I, have sponsored, with regard to the Due Process Safety and Equity Ordinance, the City of San Diego, that was developed by Councilmember Shani Rivera, and is also has some support from the County Board of Supervisors. Look, we're in pretty uncharted times here as a nation and a community, and fortunately for our students, our district is very committed to protecting all of our students. We have single-point-of-entry, we have very clear rules in terms of the necessity of federal judicial warrant to access our properties or our student, our student data. But we've seen from the city that there are additional means that can be taken to provide that security for both our students and their families and our staff. And so I'm excited about this. This item includes instructions to staff to explore contracting and procurement criteria as well, so we'll see what, what staff develops on that. But I just want to emphasize the fact that all of our students are our children, our youth, we consider them our family, we protect them as though they were, they could be our children, and our staff is our family, and we as a district and a board will absolutely do everything in our power, and we will leverage all the power we have to protect our students, families, and staff, so, and the community at large as well. So with that, if I don't have any additional comment, we will move to a vote on items C2 and C3. Seeing no comment, we will move to a vote. Student trustees, please vote. All other trustees, please vote. That motion passes unanimously, both C2 and C3, with student trustees concurring. Thank you for coming tonight. All right, we will now consider item C4, the Resolution in Support of the District's Commitment to Raise Awareness About the Dangers of Vaping. Trustee Bazo, would you like to introduce the item?
Yes, thank you, President Pedersen. I'm very honored tonight to introduce this resolution that is, commits our district to raising awareness about dangers of vaping, and also, we're going to be helped, we were, I'm going to help to launch the Second Annual Anti-Vaping Contest. This will go toward, until the end of the year, and I'm doing this alongside our student board members, Alina Nguyen and Ashley Ordaz. I can't roll ours either, but. I can't roll ours either, but... The program is called the Voices for Change 2025 Break Free Breath Free. It's a PSA contest, and this is really about our students really hearing the voice of our students. And so Dr. Bagula, Superintendent Bagula, and I attended both our student advisory board meeting, and they had a great conversation there, as well as the SWEAR meeting, which is like a wellness committee for our students. And they had some fantastic ideas I'm hoping to still utilize. We've been working closely with the comms team, so I appreciate their work on this. We're going to be, in addition to providing information about the program in a video that you're going to see in a minute here, portraying this through social media, I'm hoping to have the students be able to do some of those social media posts. And we want, again, we want to make sure that this is coming from our students' peers because especially as they get to the age where they may be starting to vape, this is really the most important. This also relates to our student achievement goal number one, student wellness. And so that we want to make sure, in addition to physical health being important, our emotional support, with vaping, I was just looking at some of the statistics in our resolution, it shows in ages 13 to 24, you have a much higher increased risk of developing depression and anxiety, and can also intensify suicidal thoughts as well. Also, earlier, our students start with e-cigarettes. They will move on. There's much greater chance of them moving on and using combustible cigarettes and other types of tobacco products, and a much higher chance of them having this be in a behavior for the rest of their lives. It's really at an epidemic proportion, as our student advisory board member had mentioned. This is a very small, you know, I feel like in the bigger picture, but something at least to start the process. And I also am hoping, as we developed this survey, the Student Wellness Survey, I'd asked our superintendent if we could include a question on vaping because it's so directly tied with these negative behaviors. So that's kind of a little bit about the contest. Just as far as some of the funding, and we don't have very much, I wish we had more. A few years ago, when this started out, it was through a settlement with the Juul Company, and Juul is who makes tobacco products and the actual vapes that students use. And so we were in a multi-law suit, I think it was a national lawsuit, and so several school boards received funding. This was going to go into our general fund because, you know, we're always looking for additional funding. And I was questioned that and thought, we need to do something to really increase awareness with this funds, this funding. It was only supposed to be a one-year program, and we've now turned it into a two-year program, and we're going to continue on, you know, making this bigger and better every year. And so again, I want to thank our comms team for their work on this and our students as well. And one of the big misconceptions a lot of people will say is, oh, see, e-cigarettes are better for you, they're, you know, not as bad for you as cigarettes, which is false. They're actually worse for you because in addition to tobacco, they have several other chemicals that are getting into the bloodstream. So if anyone tells you that, you can tell them they're wrong. We are trying to focus on our middle school students, although all school students are encouraged to be part of this program. Last year, I don't think we had any participate from the middle school, and that's really a time when we have, you know, this behavior is really coming into play, unfortunately. So with that, I think we're going to show a video. I want to make sure I, oh, the contest? Let's see. It's a, students can get involved by creating a video or a poster showing why it's time to break free, breathe free, breathe free from vaping, drugs, and alcohol. And it's open to all San Diego Unified School students, transitional kindergarten through 12th grade, and winners can win cash prizes. And district-wide attention will be honoring them at an upcoming board meeting, and it's going to be open through December 19th. If students are younger, suggestion would be to talk to your teachers or principals. Hopefully, the principals, once they get this information, they'll be sending that out, and if they aren't, we can make sure that parents know about this by sending out emails to them as well. And at the high school level, they'll also be receiving information about that through student email. So a lot of different ways to get involved. We also had a California Department of Education Tobacco Use Prevention Grant that's called a "To Pay" Grant. So I also want to thank the county for providing that grant monies to make this possible. And do you want to, you guys want to add anything?
Yeah, so I just first wanted to say I'm really proud of what the district has been doing in taking a stand, I guess, against vaping and putting student wellness first. And we all know that vaping, it doesn't just harm the person using it, but it also has like a major effect to the community around it, whether it's through secondhand exposure or just like overall negative impact. I really am proud, and I think that by passing this resolution and continuing the second year of this campaign, it's raising awareness that needs to be said within the district about the dangers of vaping. And I'm just really happy that our district is showing that we care about our students and we're protecting our students' well-being. And this is just not about today, but it's also about the future of our district. I'm really proud to be a part of a district that listens, acts, and leads with the goal of keeping our campuses safe, healthy, and supportive from.
I would just quickly like to say that I'm very happy to be sponsoring this resolution with Trustee Bazo and Trustee Nguyen. I mean, it's a genuine problem. I think one of the things that we don't think about is like, we always are hearing, unfortunately, there's people that we see in the streets or stories that we hear of substance abuse, substance use, but once we think about it for young kids, we're like, no way. Like, years ago, no adult would be sitting here thinking that their child could be exposed to these types of substances. And that's one of the things that we have to think about. And from the student perspective, just walking onto campuses and seeing that, it's very unfortunate. It's very sad to see, and some people are too scared to speak up about it. So I'm glad that events like these are created, especially in a creative way. We have students who are making posters, they're doing videos, and it's always nice that they can portray what they want in their own way. It shows that they have emotion and they have passion for it. So I'm very happy to be part of this resolution.
And President Pedersen, I just want to make one more point, which I think is really important. I think some of...
You can also make this point in discussion. We don't have a motion yet, so this is just introductory remarks.
Oh, okay. That's okay.
Okay, you can continue.
Yeah, I'll finish up my thought. I think when some of us were in high school, with combustible cigarettes, you know, it was obvious that you were smoking. But now with vaping, you know, it's very easy to do in a classroom. Kids used to tell me how kids would just breathe down their shirts. And yeah, so it's happening all around us, not even realizing it. So that, it's almost, I think, worse than actual cigarettes. Oh, yeah, all the time in, yeah, in the classroom. So anyway, I just wanted to make that point because I think that's important.
All right. To be clear, those were introductory remarks. We do not have a motion on the floor yet, so I will entertain... And we have a video, okay. We have an introductory video, okay. Let the video roll.
People vape is because they're having trouble coping with other things in their life.
Both stress and social pressure, especially in vaping, is something that's pretty normal for teens in our age group.
Media is definitely like one of the biggest influences, especially in like movies and in social media.
Show people or our classmates and peers that vaping is not a positive thing, it's a negative thing.
Talk to teachers and administrators and counselors and let them know that this is something that a lot of people are working towards limiting.
Remind people that you have alternative sources like mental health support or things like that.
If you quit vaping, like, it'll improve your health, you'll have better performance at your sport, or you'll do better on tests because you can focus. I feel like that would be good.
Very cool. Do I have a motion on this item? Trustee Bazo, do I have a second? Trustee Ordaz, we have a motion and a second. We will now take board discussion. We heard a little bit of that in the introductory remarks. Do we have any additional comments from trustees? Okay, hearing no further comments, we will move to a vote. Oh, wait, I'm sorry. Are there any public comment? Okay, good. Okay, I almost missed that. Okay, with that, we'll move to a vote. Student trustees, please vote. All other board members, please vote. All right. Item C3, C4 rather, passes unanimously with student trustees concurring. All right, and now we're going to move to a little interjection here. Yes, the last board meeting, rather, we had some technical difficulties, and we had a video that we had queued up, but we weren't able to really hear it or see it. So tonight, we're going to briefly play this from our October 14, 2025 meeting. We adopted, the resolution we adopted was in support of Filipino-American History Month, and we're going to replay that video from October 14.
Filipino History Month is important for not only our students but the community at large because it gives us time to pause and really reflect on what are our contributions in American history, our contributions in the classroom.
My name is Joanne Fields, and I am a community partner with San Diego Unified School District. At Maramesa High School, we are launching again this year our Rhodes Scholars Program. At Morris High School, I was the chair of the Morris Cluster, so I've been really involved for the past couple decades. There are fun ways to be included. For instance, with the Rhodes Scholars Program, we had a field trip with students during the summer break to meet with our mestizo leader, our San Diego mayor, Tag Gloria. And that's where the students became face-to-face with someone that has made history, but they asked questions of what motivated him. And those are the type of experiences that I look forward to working with the school district, and we do that also during the time of Filipino History Month.
Thank everyone for being here to celebrate Filipino-American History Month.
Whenever I think of like Filipino-American Heritage Month, I just think of my mom. But through her, she's like a way that I can like be connected with who I am. Hi, my name is Hin. I'm a senior at Morris High School. So my mom is very like familial and hospitable, and I feel like that's a core value in Filipino households. For example, she caters, and she makes food, like Filipino food, and she has her own catering business. But I was a part of the first Asian-American Studies class, and through that class, I was able to learn not just about like Filipino-American history, but also learn about other parts of Asian-American history. Through that class, it just connected me with a bunch of people from, or a bunch of students from my school that also don't feel connected with their culture, and through that disconnection, we bonded and we were able to be like, it's okay if we're not connected with our culture because like, we're still Filipino no matter what we practice or what we do.
That's why I love working with our schools because we create a fun experience while teaching and having a teachable moment to show again that it's not only Filipinos, but we are Filipino, and we should be proud because we have contributed into the history and are part of the fabric of the US.
That was, that was much better with the sound. With that, we'll move to Item D1. General Counsel Green, are there any reportable actions from closed session?
No.
All right. Thank you. As there are no management appointments to announce under Item D2, we'll continue to Item D3. Dr. Bagula, speaking of Rhodes Scholar, you've been all over this country lately. Please provide your information report.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Dr. Pedersen. One of our priorities is making sure that we're communicating about the opportunities to strengthen connections between home and school. We know that when families, staff, and students work together, schools thrive. So there are several ways schools share leadership with community and family, and I just want to remind us of these necessary school-based leadership groups as they're forming now. I also did this in interviews in Spanish in order to make sure to engage Spanish-speaking families. So our school site councils, our school site councils provide opportunities for parents to lead. These groups give families an active role in shaping school goals, resources, and programs, ensuring that your voices are heard and that decisions reflect the needs of your community. School site councils bring parents, educators, and principals together to guide the school plan for student achievement, including how funding, such as Title I resources, is used to support student learning. And it was also really important for us to develop the tools to have that information very easily accessible to them. And so I know that our team has created that way, so those avenues, so parents and families and members of SSCs can look up the balance of budgets, school achievement, and be able to further enhance their leadership at their school site. They also work with the District Advisory Council for Compensatory Education, or the DAC, to focus on the funding that flows into San Diego Unified from the state and federal government for students that are socioeconomically disadvantaged. And I'm going to continue to ask for that. I know as principal, it was always really hard for me to recruit parents to come and be a part of these meetings, but this is actually the way where shared leadership happens. And so we've been talking about meaningful SBSAs, so we need to have real meaningful engagement with our SSCs, and I'm going to even say with our ELAX as well. So there's opportunities now at school sites to lead in this way. I also want to remind us that our school choice enrollment application campaign has gone well, but we've decided to extend the priority application process through November 15 of 2025. I want to thank the team for that extension. I know that this came actually as a parent request, and so I was really glad that the team took on and honored that request, so thank you. Right now, nearly 5,000 applicants have applied for choice. Families outside of San Diego Unified and other school districts, along with families within our school district, now have extra time to apply for the school that is best for their child, whether it's International Bacalaurate, STEM or STEAM, World Languages, or Visual and Performing Arts. The application is easy to complete, and you can do so on our webpage, san diego unified.org. I will always make this commercial about FAFSA applications. Earlier this month, the FAFSA and the CADA application window opened for high school seniors. These forms are the first step in unlocking financial aid for college, whether that's a four-year at university, community college, or career technical program. I encourage our students and families to begin the process early so your senior has every opportunity available for their future. View your school counselor for assistance, and the deadline is March 2nd. I'm going to add a little bit here. Our school counselors and our school counseling group led by Dr. Gomez, and also I want to give a shout out to Dr. Román de Rosario and Dr. Roberson, we were asked to pilot automatic acceptance to all of our CSUs. And there was a lot of work that our schools had to do in order to see the qualifications, but what it did was it was, it allowed us to actually dive deep into how our students are doing, do actual credit checks, make sure that our data systems are up to par. Now, I know the team worked really hard, and at the same time, the news came out that Governor Newsom said CSUs will have automatic acceptance. So I was worried a little bit that we did this work in vain, but no, we did not. This will actually prepare us to do this work much easier and much faster. We learned from our practitioners on-site. I want to say thank you for the heavy lift, but we also do the work a couple of years in advance of Governor Newsom's rule. So this is going to be something that we'll have to communicate to families, that this is something earlier that San Diego Unified will have. So I just wanted to say thank you to our team that led that work. And finally, we are making changes to the way that we share information with our families. Since the start of the school year, we have revamped our webpage, san diego unified.org. The homepage features grade-level information streams. We started to send out five separate targeted weekly newsletters for each area, areas A, B, C, D, E, so that you're able to see what's happening within your own geographic region, and a new Family Resource Guide to San Diego Unified. Specifically, the Family Resource Guide to San Diego Unified was developed to put information families need at their fingertips in one place. It is now available in English, Spanish, Filipino, Somali, and Vietnamese, and it includes topics such as tips for new families, information about student wellness, before and after-school programs, school nutrition, stats and facts about the district, tools to receive district updates, a helpful list of all of our acronyms, because I know we'd like to edut speak, and detailed information about the legal rights of our students and families. This is a tool... This is a tool that should be used about, and even like as a commercial for people that might be considering San Diego Unified, to have it easily in their fingertips. So in the coming years, we can expect that it'll evolve and change to meet the needs of our families. But this is a really good start in making sure that we have this very easily available. So that concludes my report, and thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Bagula. Don't go very far, we're going to need you in a second here. We will now hear item E one. Oh, did you have a comment?
Just want to express my appreciation for the focus on communication, listening to families, extending the choice window based on that feedback and your work to make sure that especially Spanish-speaking families are aware of SSC and opportunities for engagement. I know this isn't about our communications guardrail, but I think really great evidence that we're continuing to make strides in that direction, so thank you for that.
Okay, okay, started something.
Yes, I want to acknowledge what happened to our families this past week with our children. Our job as trustees and as school community is to try to keep our students safe and to be proactive when we can to protect our children. And I want to thank Superintendent and her staff for working with the mayor and with the council people to do something about the Persian community. And as I've said to her, my concern is for all of our communities, the city. We're all a part of the same community. I was at Fay School yesterday after we learned that it was one of the children from Fay School, that we all, as a city, as a community, education otherwise, we have to do whatever we can to help protect our children. And if there are some things that we know about, and this is even to the larger community, there's any way we can do something to try to help our children to stay safe, please let us know. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we will now hear item E one. Student outcomes focused governance, or SOFG, as we could probably find the acronym in the resources Bobby just described. We have our monitoring report. Student Wellness Chronic Absenteeism Reduction Goals 1.1 and 1.2. Belonging and Relationships Goals 1.3 and 1.4. And Student Wellness Index Pilot Goal 1.5. Welcome. Oh, we brought the whole team. Wow, you rolled deep.
Wellness is everyone's responsibility. All right. This evening's report offers a portrait of student wellness through the lenses of belonging, mattering, and relationships, attendance, and self-efficacy. The data presented marks our first attempt at quantifying student wellness metrics and also reflects our district's evolution into a learning organization that continuously listens, reflects, and adjusts. The findings show clear areas of growth and points of concern, reminding us that wellness is a progressive, ambitious goal, one that will require both courage and collective learning. Some of the key findings or points of celebration are that chronic absenteeism continues to decline district-wide, improving from 21.4% to 18.7%, with especially strong gains among Hispanic or Latino, English learner, and socioeconomically disadvantaged students. Growth mindset and teacher-student relationships remain our highest-rated survey indicators, both improving three percentage points over the past year. Belonging and mattering are trending upward, with spotlight students exceeding the annual target by more than a full percentage point ahead of schedule. Several elementary school sites, Marshall, Hardy, Encanto, and others serve as bright spots, demonstrating the power of coordinated attendance teams, data-driven intervention, and family partnerships. And in this learning, there are points of concern and opportunities for learning. Self-efficacy remains the lowest survey category at 51%, particularly among middle and high school students, and was measured based on student responses to the following questions: How confident are you in achieving your academic goals? How well do you manage tasks when they seem overwhelming? We also saw the sharpest declines in our middle school wellness indicators of belonging, self-management, and confidence, which, much like our academic data, signals a vulnerable transition period for our students that demands targeted attention. Every time I read those questions, though, I think I would have a hard time answering them too, so I understand this is an evolving thing. That's why I say I'm leaning into the complexity of this. In addition, it is concerning that our students with disabilities continue to exhibit the highest chronic absence rates at 27.9%, which indicates that we need to strengthen and differentiate supports to ensure our system is not creating barriers or challenges for our students to attend school regularly. For our next steps in learning as a system, now that this data is available, area superintendents and site leaders will be analyzing and reflecting on their school-level data to set site-specific goals that increase student wellness and are integrated into school plans for student achievement, LCAP goals and future wellness index design. Which leads me to the final highlight of this presentation. A partnership with SDSU, the County Office of Education, and five neighborhood clusters who will pilot a multi-dimensional wellness index in '25-'26 to establish our district baseline. Our hope is to use this learning from this year to inform future wellness measures that speak directly to how we've defined wellness, which encompasses the body, the mind, the connections with family, friends, and the community. Wellness is not static. It is a journey of learning and alignment. These results do not define us, they inform us, reminding us that progress and wellness is both measurable and meaningful when we learn together. Our commitment remains to build a district where every student is present, connected, and confident, and feels cared for and is cared for. It's only by leaning into our collective wisdom and experiences that we can impact the wellness of every child and every community. I know we said we have a whole team, and I want to welcome up Marissa Allen, Dr. Román de Rosario, Susan Bardollar, and Melissa Spaden. Thank you, Melissa. And I also want to thank our school leaders who are here from Hardy and Marshall Elementary, along with area superintendents, as we celebrate Bright Spots. And I do often talk about how wellness is everyone's responsibility, so it's really beautiful to see such a large team. But thank you so much. You have the microphone.
Thank you for the introductions. Good evening, President, Board Trustees, and Superintendent Bagula. Tonight, we will be presenting our interim progress report on our interim wellness goals, aligned with Board Goal Number One, Student Wellness. Our work aligns with the guidance from the California Department of Education and Attendance Works, a nonprofit initiative, which recognizes that attendance is a key indicator in student wellness, reflecting both the student's physical and emotional readiness to learn. Throughout this report, you will see how we are connecting those traditional metrics with broader indicators of belonging, relationships, and emotional well-being. We begin, sorry. We begin with our shared definition of wellness, which is taking care of our body, our mind, and the connections that we have with family, friends, and our community. As requested by the board, we're using our current measures, chronic absenteeism, and key components of the student survey, specifically belonging, mattering, and teacher relationships, while simultaneously developing the multi-dimensional wellness index. Our approach is informed by the CDE and Attendance Work Guidance, which emphasize that attendance and wellness are deeply connected. Students who feel safe, healthy, and connected are more likely to attend and engage in school. This approach allows us to monitor progress using existing indicators while we build our comprehensive system that captures the full picture of our students' wellness. I'll pass it on to Dr. de Rosario.
Good evening, President Pedersen, Trustees, Superintendent Bagula. So we're going to begin with looking at some attendance data. And what you see there, coming off the heels of a global pandemic, is incredibly high chronic absentee rate. A reminder, chronic absentee is an indicator when a student is absent 10% of the time or more. And that tends to be a point where we see in research it highly impacts the student's success. And as we, San Diego Unified, like many districts, saw big decreases between the 21-22 school year and the 22-23 school year. But then we see that decrease starting to become a little less steep. And what we want to prevent is a new normal, where we have a baseline that's higher than what it was pre-pandemic. So just so you know, for San Diego Unified, our pre-pandemic chronic absentee rate in the 2018-19 school year was 12.4. So we've set up chart, we charted a course to incrementally do the work to get back to that pre-pandemic level. The goals that we set are guided by our California dashboard. They have a definition of what is considered to decrease in chronic absenteeism, which in this case, it's half of a percent. So we thought, you know, post-pandemic, the chronic absentee rate was so high that we need to be a little more aggressive than a half a point percent. So we actually charted out one and a half percent average per year, district-wide, in a decrease in chronic absenteeism. And that's what you're seeing in the dotted line. And what you're seeing with that point, 18.7, is our projected chronic absentee rate for 2025. A little caveat, that the official results will be published November 15, when California Dashboard is released. But this is our estimates using the same methodology. They count all students that attended one of our schools for more than 31 days. That's the rules for who counts towards the district's chronic absentee rate. Also, it's inclusive of students from TK to eighth grade. That's how the dashboard does that indicator. And what we saw, and Dr. Bagula mentioned this, is not only did we see a decrease district-wide, but we also saw higher-than-average decrease for some of our groups that had high chronic absentee rates, including our Hispanic students, 3.4% decrease, and our English learners, 3.2. But we also see areas that, for instance, are Black students. They were actually at 24.2. They had a lower chronic absentee rate than our students with disabilities, or English learners, or Latinos, but they had a 2.2 decrease, which was less than a district average, but is still substantial decrease in chronic absentee rate. So now, what we're showing is our spotlight students' progress. Now, during the 24-25 school year, we looked at our spotlight students and how they did in terms of chronic absentee rate, and we calculated a 27.6% chronic absentee rate. So we set a target, which was 2% a year, which is more than the one and a half percent a year that we set for all students. This is consistent with what we're doing with literacy, with math, with our CCI, setting larger targets for our students that are our spotlight students. Something of note with our chronic absentee rates, and it's not shown in the data here, but there is a difference between chronic absentee rates across grade levels, and that's something that we're very interested in looking into. What we've seen at San Diego Unified, similar to throughout the state, is higher rates of chronic absentee amongst our TK students and our kindergarten students. And often, we see the chronic absentee rate decrease in the later grades of elementary and then start increasing again in high school. And what we know is, through our experiences, that it's not just students not coming to school because they choose not to come to school, but it's also the family dynamics that are critical in how that chronic absentee rate manifests itself in our totals. So with our spotlight students, we are working diligently through improvement networks. We collaborate with the county. They have an ICANN Improvement Network, and we have another broader statewide initiative called RACE. And we're working with a subset of schools that have large percentages of spotlight students to really try to have targeted work, that's ongoing work. Every two weeks, we meet, we get a list of students, we identify what are the strategies we're going to use, what are the interventions, and we monitor whether it's working or not. And we really think that that's part of the solution, is using data in a way that's actionable and just being relentless about that pursuit of engaging our families and students in the importance of coming to school. So with that, I'll switch over to our student survey. And what you see here is a composite of four of the questions that were asked. And like Marissa mentioned, with the focus on belonging, mattering, and relationships. And I really like the intentionality of us really picking these questions thoughtfully, because, you know, what happens when you really believe that your teachers care about you? You know, so if teachers are acting in a way where their students believe that they're caring about them, their students are going to be more likely to ask them for help. I mean, I think that we can all agree on that premise. And when our students are more likely to talk to their teachers when they need help, they're going to feel a greater sense of belonging. And they're going to feel like their voice and their presence matter. And all of those things are foundational to the goals that we're setting. And what I do want to point out is, we did see encouraging increases in this composite score of the students scoring it a four or five, which is the two highest rating, when we combined these four. But there one caveat is that last year, being the first year that we administered the student survey, we administered it in January, and then again in May. This is the first year that we administer it in the fall. So what is still determined, or what still we're going to see, is whether that increase is a function of it being the beginning of the school year, or if it's in a function of things, student behaviors and attitudes changing based on what we're doing. So we had marked at the beginning of the year a goal of increasing this composite score by 2%, which would be going from 57.4 in the spring to 59.4 in the spring of this upcoming year. And based on our fall survey, we've exceeded that growth, and we'll readminister the survey right before spring break, and that will be shared with the board at a later date. And finally, we're looking at our spotlight students. And another caveat of this is that we're still in the process of finalizing our cohort of spotlight students for the 25-26 school year. So what we did with this is, the winter of '25 and the spring of '25 was the 24-25 spotlight student cohort. And the fall of 2025, we used that same 24-25 cohort of spotlight students. So it's more of kind of a match data. So those students that in the spring reported 54.9% in that composite, those same students reported a higher level of belonging and mattering and relationships. And again, like overall, this is higher than what we had initially set out as a goal. And we're looking forward to continuing the work. We developed dashboards for our site leaders. These new goals are going to translate into SIPSA goals and really try to work hand-in-hand with school leadership and the counselors to use this data formatively, so that we could continue to improve the climate for our students and the well-being. So now I'll turn it over to my colleague, Assistant Superintendent Kazari.
All right, I get the fun part, the bright spots. So we know leadership matters, and one of the ways we talk about what this work looks and feels like at schools is by talking to principals about the things that they do. So the slide that you're seeing represents places where we see standout work happening. And please know that that work is not happening by chance, it's happening by design. And this is evidence of strategic leadership and follow-through. And really, in the case, we're going to be really talking about chronic absenteeism, it's how principals hold a whole community, right? This is not just the effort of a principal, but it's their strategic action is seen through their staff, their students, their parents, and just the community at large. And being a principal, that work is not easy. So you see a list of schools up here that show some really amazing growth in decreasing chronic absenteeism on the left, and also where we see great data for our spotlight students in terms of how they responded to the survey on the right. For tonight, we are very proud, myself, and this is also on behalf of my colleague Stephen Dorsey, to represent two principals today. We have Principal Aragon, who is the principal at Hardy Elementary, Principal Marine, who's going to be talking in a moment at Marshall Elementary. And if you look at their data, they have made significant growth in decreasing chronic absenteeism in their school. in decreasing chronic absenteeism in their schools. And we're excited to learn a little bit about how they did it.
Good evening, and thank you for having me. I'm Christy Aragon, the proud principal of Hardy Elementary. And I'm so excited to be here to share about our growth in attendance. Over the past year and a half, we've lifted our ADA almost 3% to 97% ADA and reduced chronic absenteeism by more than 15%, hovering around 7% today. We organize the work in three areas. We look at each through a Tier One, Tier Two, and Tier Three lens, what all students need, what some need, and what a few need. First, our attendance team. Each week, our counselor, clerk, health tech, and I meet to review student attendance data and assign one concrete next step per student that is either chronically absent or at risk. That might be a positive phone call, a nudge letter, a kinvo text check-in, a follow-up on an independent study contract, or even a home visit. Many of these strategies have been taught through our ICANN Improving Chronic Absenteeism Network through the County Office of Education. Next, leadership and communication. We make the data visible in our Hardy Happenings weekly newsletter, as you can see in the slide. We publish the weekly percent present and chronic absence snapshot side-by-side to our SPSA target, so families see the goal and where we are. Additionally, every Friday at our school-wide assembly, the Traveling Owl, also in our photo, the Traveling Stuffed Owl moves into the classroom with the top weekly attendance. It's a friendly competition that keeps attendance front and center. And finally, improvement practices and mindsets. We learn from our own data and then make adjustments. Last year, we saw our best weekly attendance during our literacy week with our book character parade and our family readout. We hit over 98% attendance, a clear signal that joyful, engaging days bring kids to school. Two years ago, we saw a dip in attendance on the week before winter break. So last year, we built in December to remember with Daily Spirit Days. Yes, I was the elf on the shelf, sitting in a planter, waving to students as they entered school, and I hid all over campus that day. And who says it doesn't snow in San Diego? On the last day before break, I sprayed snow from the roof while students reached to the sky to experience a California snowstorm. It's up there as one of my favorite days ever, and we dramatically improved our attendance that week than the year before. At Hardy, we work hard to create opportunities for families to engage in their child's education and learning community and create a warm, nurturing school environment. We know that if students are in attendance, we can teach them, and they will grow. COVID and the years that followed disrupted habits and the daily rhythm of coming to school for many families. So we are rebuilding that habit, partnering to remove real barriers, and making every day worth showing up for. Schools should feel safe, inviting, and a little magical. As our Hardy families have heard me say time and time again, I want students to run into school in the morning and cry when they have to leave. Not really cry, but you know what I mean. When students and family feel that sense of belonging and joy, attendance and achievement follow.
So our bright spot of Marshall brings me to Frankie Beverley and Mays. Joy and pain, right? Our bucket has been full on pain lately. We need to bring out the joy. And that's what Marshall Elementary has done. They have transformed that campus into a joyous campus. And that is all from the work of Ms. Marisol Marine, the new principal of Marshall Elementary. And I'm going to let her sing her song.
A good friend of mine and a mentor of mine always says, "Don't write it out. Speak from the heart." So that's what I did today. When Dr. Dorsey said, "Hey, we're going to present your work." And I'm like, "Okay, do you want me to present a slide? Do you want me to create something?" He goes, "No, just, you know..." I'm like, "All right, I'll give you a couple of pictures. I'll do something." He's like, "Okay." And I gave him a bulletin, you know, and a couple of... I was like, "Here, I'll give you the doc. Take some pictures." And then yesterday, he goes, "Oh, guess what? You got to come and speak." And I'm like, "Oh, okay." And I was so busy yesterday. And then this morning, I'm like, "Here, you can do this. I can do that. Let me create the..." And he's like, "Don't worry. Just speak from the heart." So I'm going to let you know that as the new principal of Marshall Elementary, I walked onto campus. And I knew that I had to think about this school, my school now, and think about, how could I come into a school that had had many administrators in the last five years? Think of a school that had 89% attendance rate with about, let me go to my data, in 23-24, 42% chronic absenteeism. And think about, what are the systems and structures that are already present at that school that I could use to influence students, teachers, and families? To really lift, because I didn't, I wanted to be a change agent, but I needed it to come from the people that were already there at that school. It had to come from them. And so I needed to know who was already there in that campus that were the people that could do this. I wanted to motivate children to want to come to school. I wanted to influence teachers to want to walk alongside me. And I wanted to show parents that we were there to open up our doors again. Because they were closed, those gates were closed. We were walking children to the gates and releasing them. And I wanted to open up the gates and let them in. So I needed to look at data. And I knew that we were part of ICANN, but we didn't have a coach for the first two months. And I didn't know what ICANN was. And coming from central office, off of five years, I was like, "I don't know what this is." But it was rolling up my sleeves with a powerful young counselor saying, "We're going to do this, Mrs. Marine," and a community assistant that was going to say, "I will do whatever you need." And a couple of teachers that were saying, "I will ride along with you." And beautiful children that would do anything. And parents that said, "Thank you for opening up your gates." And knowing that we had families, we had already a PBIS team that had some systems and structures. We had, who knew it, that we were looking at? And really being able to look at data and the ICANN, working with the county, and really pulling that data apart and really focusing in on those chronically absent students. And we took our data from 42%, you say 25, but we say 24, anyway, because we looked at it to the very last day. And now, so at the end of the year, we did have 25, and that was a 17% change. And when we saw that, and we presented it every single time, every... We met every week, and we presented it to our staff. And we showed them the data. They started to believe that all those little things, all those postcards that we had them write out, it was making a change, that they were buying into it. Those scratches that was created by my counselor was highlighted at the San Diego County Office of Ed. We were creating goals, student-centered goals that they are now creating. And I was pushing it in our staff bulletin. We have golden horseshoe highlights. Mrs. Alessi, our first-grade teacher, doing no-cost celebrations. A watercolor painting party when they meet their goal. And the goal is, if we get, you know, one student absent for 17 days, we meet our goal. And she has 97% attendance rate. And for the first two months, we were at 95. And our goal this year, our ADA, from 89% last year, is we're striving for 95. And so that is our goal. And now, we're connecting it with parents. Because even today, we had our ELAC meeting, and our task today was attendance. And we're targeting our TK and our kindergarten. And I said, "What can we do? How about Padres en el Parque on our additional modified days? Getting our cafeteria people to make sack lunches on our additional modified day and having them bring lunch? 15 Haitian Creole families along with 15 other ELAC families." And I look at my Haitian Creole dads, and I'm like, "Wouldn't you like us to open up our soccer field?" And the dads just opened up their eyes. I'm like, "After lunch, we do a 10-minute soccer match with your sons or daughters." And they were just lighting up. That's how we get our parents involved. That's how we get our students involved. That's how we motivate our teachers. Because when we see the data, they will come. That's it.
Hi, everybody. I hope you can hear me. I'm Susan Barndollar. I'm the Executive Director of Nursing and Wellness and Mental Health Resource Center. And as we've just seen, attendance is one important indicator of student wellness. It reflects whether students feel well enough, safe enough, and connected enough to come to school each day. But attendance is just one piece of a larger wellness picture. To truly understand and support wellness, we need a broader, multi-dimensional view, one that helps us look beyond who is present or how our students, staff, and school communities are doing overall. That's where the development of our Wellness Index comes in. The index is organized around the four dimensions, body, mind, relationships, and community, integrating physical health, mental health, and relationships into comprehensive measure. We are developing this index in partnership with Melissa Spaden at the San Diego County Office of Ed and Dr. Jenica Paz from San Diego State University, whose teams bring research expertise and deep focus on student well-being. Our internal team supporting the wellness goal has been identifying all of the current work that's already being done under each domain of the wellness goal with the ultimate goal of aligning and supporting our different departments. Since we will be measuring wellness, we want to understand how we currently support sites and students and determine where the gaps, the overlaps, and the unmet needs may exist. Now that we've looked at how our wellness framework aligns with the district's vision and existing supports, we'd like to share where we are in developing the Student Wellness Index itself, the tool that ultimately will help us measure our progress towards the board's wellness goal. This slide introduces Interim Student Wellness Goal 1.5, the development of a multi-dimensional student wellness index that will be piloted across five clusters participating in the Student Behavioral Health Initiative Program, or SBHIP. So this is an existing program that's happening in these five clusters. The clusters are Canyon Hills, Mira Mesa, Mission Bay, Morrison-San Diego, and the schools are listed underneath there. We're currently in the research and design phase. And our greatest, our guest speaker, who couldn't be here, she had to leave, Melissa Spaden, was going to share more detail. But now, it's going to be Marissa Allen sharing the detail that Melissa Spaden would share. We're not Melissa Spaden. I think we can both agree. But we're going to do our best. We have our notes, and we're going to read her next couple of slides. So you take over in this one. So to develop our pilot of our Student Wellness Index, a multi-dimensional measurement tool, we have worked with these five clusters listed here. Our students co-constructed the definition of the framework of wellness and are currently helping us determine which questions most authentically reflect their lived experiences. So we engage in cognitive interviews in this process with about 90 students across all five clusters. I don't think it's five. Is it five? Yes. Asking them a series of questions about each individual survey question. The counseling and wellness teams at the district and at the sites did a phenomenal job with our students, organizing the students and the spaces that they were in during these interviews, recording the feedback, and sharing the insights. And this research collaboration and process ensures that the index reflects what students themselves consider wellness, not just adult-defined measures. The same schools will pilot the survey this winter. And the data from these survey questions will help us understand how we currently support schools in each of these domains as well as provide our research partners the information that they need for the validation process. Ultimately, the Wellness Index will serve as an anchor measure for future wellness monitoring reports. Right now, our focus is on the student survey, an important component of the index. But through the year, we will continue to collect data and align quantitative data from across the district and eventually include staff and parent self-report surveys aligned to the wellness goal. Right now, we're aware that the current iteration could possibly be wrong and definitely incomplete. But we are working across the district to understand both what is accessible and valued data to include. So before we show this video, a central feature of this work is student voice. And I know we keep saying, "We want to hear our students' voices." Our students are not just participating, but they're actually co-designing the index. As shared in past discussions, for wellness data to be accurate, it has to be in student-accessible language. So through empathy interviews, they shared their perspectives on what wellness means to them and how schools can better support them. Their interviews were a critical part of the process, providing direct feedback that guided the definition, the framework, and now the survey development. So we're going to show a short video featuring these students and reflecting on their experience and their role in shaping the Wellness Index. I want to thank the staff and the students who helped put this together. Do we need to play music?
The reason wellness is so important to me is because I think everything builds off wellness. Wellness and mental wellness is essentially the foundation for everything that we're able to do and able to accomplish.
It can help me, like, think clearly. And it gives me the opportunity to help other people.
Wellness allows me to express my feelings and share it out to trusted adults and allow me to collect myself.
Having them reach out to us shows that they care about us and they care about our opinions and our thoughts. So that's why I think it's important to have us involved in the process of serving us.
I think it'll benefit our future, and it'll show kids and help better understand, because that it's okay to, you know, speak up for your feelings.
Getting our input ensures that the survey reflects what wellness really means to students today, not just what it looks like on paper, and shows that students are partners in creating better schools and communities.
At Wellness Break at my school, we get to eat snacks, get to walk, or play with Play-Doh, or draw.
I practice wellness at school by coming, of course, to the Wellness Center, but also tapping into building a support system that can help me through wellness challenges, like teachers, friends, and more.
Ms. Diaz comes into our room and helps us about a lot of things, like if we're struggling with cyberbullying or a lot of things. But she also teaches us, sometimes you can just step out and go to the counseling center, and you can take some deep breaths, drink some water, chill there for a little bit.
I practice wellness at school by trying to maintain balance and connection in my daily routine. Between my classes and activities, I've learned that wellness means being intentional with how I spend my time.
I loved it. I thought it was super effective in gathering student's voice and ensuring that students really felt heard.
Liked about the interview is that Mr. Scott was very patient, helpful, and kind to me. And he boosted my mood because of how like positive and how kind he was.
I liked that they, well, they like they treated me like a, like a real person, not just like when people, when adults are kind of like, oh, like that to a child and then adult.
I liked how there was no pressure, you know, how you were able to answer freely and how knowing it's going to help benefit, you know, like the future students and everything.
Okay, shout out to Mr. Scott. That was Scott Irwin, who's retired. He started all this and we are coming back in his place. So now that you've heard how the Wellness Index is being developed, I'd like to close by sharing what's next. Over the next several months, with the help of Dr. Paz and Melissa Spaden, we will finalize the index elements. Then we will pilot the Wellness Index in those five clusters and work to establish a baseline by May 2026. We'll return to the board in summer of 2026 to share our progress and early learnings. Because wellness isn't a single program or department, it touches every part of the student experience. The Wellness Goal Committee is also building a coordinated menu of tiered supports. These supports will be aligned to the index and tested in our pilot schools to ensure it not only measures wellness, but it also strengthens the systems that support it. This work that's happening now is a district-wide effort. We're mapping what we're already doing. We're changing it based on the needs that we see, based on how we develop the Wellness Index. And it requires continued coordination across a lot of departments. Together, we're building a clear picture of student wellness and the support to help every student thrive. In closing, this work is really about bringing our systems together, using data to understand how our students are doing in body, mind, relationships, and community, and making sure every part of our district is aligned around that shared vision of wellness. The Wellness Index will give us a more complete picture of student well-being, combining data-like attendance with student voice and lived experience. We're grateful for your continued partnership and welcome your perspectives on finding the right balance between those qualitative and quantitative measures and what our students tell us about their sense of belonging, safety, and connection. Thank you.
Dr. Bugula, you good? All right. Wow. Thank you to everybody who presented tonight and thank you to all of you out there. We will now move to our folks in TV land. Do we have any public speakers here in the room or?
We have one in-person speaker and two virtual. In-person is Mary Davis. You have three minutes.
Hi, good evening. Mary Davis here with the Public Education Oversight Project in advocacy for old-school education and to urge you to shift back to reading proficiency first and foremost. San Diego Unified just released its new goals and somehow literacy, I was shocked to find, is goal number two. Wellness, the feel-good catch-all, is goal number one. And as seemingly well-intentioned as that might be, let's be clear, you can't wellness your way out of illiteracy. And for all the talk about banned books, it's, it's interesting to me that banning a book is temporary, but illiteracy until that problem is solved will deprive somebody more than, from a book than any political foe ever will. It also fuels the prison pipeline. And so knowing that, then I would ask you, by subordinating literacy, what role you might be playing in that? Wellness is window dressing. It looks good on paper, but it doesn't teach a child how to read when you apex that. So I see so many districts that are shifting the goalposts from reading to wellness, from academics to social justice, from outcomes to optics. Every new buzzword hides the same old failure that too many students can't read or do math at grade level. And instead of fixing it, districts seem to be pivoting to an increasing medicalization and profiteering off of the students. Between data collection and expanded Medi-Cal billing, we've gone from students as learners to treating them as patients and profit centers. Many school services are now reimbursable through Medi-Cal, which means that every service, screening, and support plan actually incentivizes a profit motive. While literacy stays a distant second place, the real priority seems to be turning vulnerabilities into valuation, cash for kids disguised as care. That's not innovation, it's institutional self-preservation. So here's my challenge to you. Move literacy back to goal number one. Stop measuring success by slogans. And if the board truly cares about wellness, start with the well-being that comes from actually knowing how to read, write, and reason without the help of AI, not with data for dollars or cash for our kids. Thank you.
Our virtual speakers, Courtney Bolitsky. Courtney available?
Yes, thank you so much and good evening, honorable trustees. My name is Courtney Baltiskey and I'm calling tonight behalf of Children First Collective San Diego, calling to offer a thought partnership as well as enthusiasm for this Wellness Index. A tremendous amount of intention and work have obviously gone into these first phases. My inquiry and curiosity is how we really adapt the index to our TK through second graders. At this point, you know, across the state, we continue to see extremely low rates of chronic absenteeism for these grades. And though it could be different methodology to engage with these families and kiddos, they've got a lot to say on this subject. And I know the district will do an incredible job in adapting the methodology for that sincere engagement. Thank you so much for your consideration and continued efforts for early education across San Diego.
And Erin Hogaboom. Is Erin available?
Yes, can you hear me? Thank you. My name is Erin Hogaboom. I'm Director of San Diego's Early Child and Co-Lead of Children First San Diego. Like my counterpart Courtney, I want to really commend the trustees, the superintendent, and staff for focusing on this multi-dimensional Student Wellness Index. This really does demonstrate the district's commitment to student success and family engagement, looking at students holistically as part of their communities, and I really appreciate that. And I'm, while I'm so pleased at this report on student wellness, similar to my colleague who spoke before, it does, the survey data doesn't appear to include the TK through second-grade students. And I'm just curious if there's a timeline for when we begin to also evaluate the wellness of those early-grade students, realizing that we might need to look at different, different measures than older students or perhaps relying additionally on family engagement. But really, that differing process shouldn't dissuade that data collection. And this seems particularly important, given that high rates of absenteeism in early grades. So to reinforce the focus on TK and Kinder students and families, we strongly believe that we should have insights on four, or five, six, and seven-year-olds so that we really can best meet their needs and set them up for long-term success. I really just want to again commend the district and the board and the superintendent for this focus and just again reiterate our partnership and collaboration to focus on the TK through second grader in the survey. Thank you so much.
Great. All right, thank you. Do any of the trustees have any questions or comments? Is that your hand? Did I see a hand over here? Seeing none, just kidding. Trustee Hazen.
I wasn't, I wasn't sure if trustee Whitehurst Payne wanted to go first. So really appreciate what's been presented. Appreciate that we are seeing wellness data in the same way we see literacy and math data, being able to see what our goal is and how we are tracking against that goal. So appreciate that work. I wanted to mention that I noticed in the wonderful presentations, we heard the reports from Hardy and from Marshall, I think we have two new principals that are doing really extraordinary work. And I think this really reflects what happens when we bring in and empower and support exceptional student-centered leaders who use both data and joy and partner with educators. We see that kids are able to reach their full potential. And I don't know as much about Marshall, but because Hardy is in my sub-district, I've had a chance to visit. And I know we've all seen that they aren't just a bright spot when it comes to the data shared here tonight, but we also saw in both literacy and math that they're a bright spot as well. And I think that that's noteworthy. And so when we hear criticism about our focus on wellness, I think it's really important that we know that when we focus on wellness, when we create joyful, engaging learning environments, students don't just show up. Students learn and students achieve. And what we see at Hardy is students who are now growing significantly in literacy and math, and they are happy and healthy and well. And so what it really reinforces for me is the work that this board endeavored to do, I think, two years ago when we set these goals. We said, yes, we believe every child can thrive and succeed academically, and we also want them to be well. And we are doing both of those things. I do have a couple questions. And it's about, so first around the absenteeism, the chronic absenteeism data and comparisons to pre-pandemic levels. I'm curious if you think that the high rates of absenteeism we're seeing in TK might skew the data? Because pre-pandemic, we didn't have a lot of TK students. And so when you pull out those four and five-year-olds, do we see the same thing? Is it, so I mean, if you can speak to that and then I've got a couple others.
Without a doubt, if all of a sudden we had 20% more grades that we were evaluating or 10% more grades, more grade levels, and they had the lowest rate, it would have a negative impact. The way I would think about it is, is each, like in adding TK would have whatever that delta is, which is right now, it's about three or four points lower than the other grade levels. You would divide that four by like seven or eight, and that would be the net impact on the total grade. So it, and that's significant.
Yeah, so I think if it is significant, as we continue to look at that data, to maybe remind us what it would be sort of with and without, just when we're comparing to pre-pandemic, because you said that, you know, that, that change is significant. I'm wondering also if it would be possible, so we saw that there was, I'm going to use the word significant, tell me if it's statistically significant, but a significant decrease in chronic absenteeism among Hispanic students. And we also saw similarly noteworthy increase in ELA CASP scores. So this increase in literacy achievement amongst the same population. And I'm wondering if you think it is a fair assumption that this increase in attendance also contributed to that increase in literacy achievement? Or if that's something that we could dig into?
We have an opportunity to further explore. Like we always say, you know, correlation isn't necessarily causal, but with our, our change to the student survey, I've shared in the past that while it's anonymous, it's not confidential, meaning that we have the ability to further disaggregate the data and really dive into those types of questions where we're trying to compare dimensions of student attitudes and attendance and how that correlates with their race and ethnicity and how that compares with other schools in the county. So I definitely think it's worth diving into it because it is a very large, significant student group, our Hispanic students. And now, not just with our literacy scores, but we saw increases in the CCI index for our Hispanic students and an increase in their attendance rates. And after a while, it just seems obvious that something's going on that's working. And I think that's something that we are continuing to look into.
Thank you. Yeah, I think that's something that I'm really hungry for is what is it that we're doing that we believe is really moving the needle for our Hispanic students? And so my hope is that when we receive future reports, that there's a little more analysis and insight into what might be contributing to this. I want to reiterate what we heard from community members who shared comments about really wanting to see wellness data for our youngest learners, for TK, Kinder, first and second grade. Not having those insights, I think, is really challenging, particularly when we know that when we invest early and support our youngest learners, it yields really positive results down the line. So I know I've said it before, but it continues to be a concern of mine that we do not know how our youngest learners are doing and how well or unwell they are. But we do, we heard last year that there were behavioral challenges. We hear that, you know, we have high rates of chronic absenteeism, yet we don't really have a sense of their wellness. I'm wondering if at this point, and I don't know if this is for you Superintendent Bugula, but if there are any insights as we sort of head into budget season about investments that we should be making to support our wellness, where clearly our investments in school leaders is making a difference, but any other insights that you think are important for us to keep in mind as we work on the future budget?
And that is every, every time we work on a budget, the first thing we do is we say, what are the investments? Like, how are we going to make sure that we maintain these supports? And so I, I don't have the very specifics, but I do know that that's the first thing we do is we say, what are our goals? How are we going to reach them? And that's actually money that we know we want to make sure we continue to invest. It is an aim for us to make sure that that's very transparent and public so that our families understand that that's actually the first decision that we make is to continue to support our students. I do want to speak to the young grades and your concern. I do, we also want to know. I also am like just, what I'm trying to do is making sure that the work is developed in a way that is reasonable with educators. And so right now, we just have a lot of new assessments. And I'm, I'm trying to make sure that I'm being mindful of that and developing that assessment literacy that's very necessary before adding another piece in there. But it is something that I'll continue to pay attention to. Thank you.
All right, trustee Whitehurst Payne.
Thank you for this opportunity to share. And I must say, it was a good report. I too noted the increase, the Hispanics and the EL students are really leading the way in, on the chronic absenteeism data. And whatever we're doing, I'm sure Ramon, you'll find out what's going on and figure it out so we can extrapolate it to other groups and to a deeper extent. But I, I want to comment that I have, I know 39 regular schools. Some charter schools, I have not gotten out to all of my charter schools this year, but to all of my traditional schools, I have visited them at least once, some of them several times. And I am more and more convinced, Richard, trustee Barrera, and I comment all the time, that we know when we have a leader that we know when we have a leader at a school, because that school is not on speed dial to us once a day or two or three times a week or whatever, we meet ad nauseam. And I must say that I commend the fact that Marisol, and I know she's back at a site, but I really am very pleased at what is going on at Marshall School. We visited that school and went around and checked on everything, and I like the progress. And you heard about it tonight, the things that are going on. When we have that revolving door for leadership, it does not work. We have to have a leader who is stable, who has a vision for where we want to take that school and how we want those children to learn. We must have that. And I'm glad that Dr. Bagula understands that and is working to continue that process along with her staff. Thank you, Steve, Dr. Dorsey, because he knows he's on my speed dial if one of my schools is not, is having difficulty. So I'm very grateful for you. I know you left central office and went out to a school, went back to a school, and you told me you're retiring from there when you do, but not yet. Because we need, we need stability and we need to see the kind of growth that you're bringing forth at that school site. I want to talk for a moment, and by the way, before I go any further, I want to just acknowledge the Lincoln students who are there. They're here for a reason, to see us, but I want to acknowledge you here in the audience. But I want to acknowledge that we are, as human beings, we are multi-dimensional. And we need something more than reading, writing, and arithmetic, or as they used to say back home, reading, writing, arithmetic. We can do those things, but we also need to acknowledge that we have emotional needs, mental needs, physical needs, et cetera. And we can do it all. We can do it all. At least we'll be trying. The students today do not want to be bored with reading, writing, and arithmetic by itself. They want to do some things. And that's why, as long as I'm on this board, and that could be for a day, a week, a year, I will emphasize that VAPA, my colleagues, I know several of you agree, that VAPA is important. Some students only come to school because they like band, or only because they like singing in the choir, or whatever it is. The football players, the athletics program, they are interested in what the coach is saying to them. And they come because they know the coach will get on them and check with their English teachers and their math teachers to find out how they're doing in their classes. Otherwise, so we have to be smart in this year of 2025, I keep emphasizing that, and stress multi-dimensional aspects of learning and teaching. And I only touched on a couple of them with VAPA, with the athletics program and so forth. But we open the door for whatever our students need, and we try to meet those needs. We're now expanding, I've shared earlier about the kids in the neighborhood, if they're walking on their way to school and they're, they're hit by vehicles, then we need to figure out how we, as a community, not just the schools, but how we can help our children not to get hit by a vehicle because there's nothing there to protect them. Whatever it is, if we, we can do it, we need to do it. And so we hold them accountable because I love the Padres, they always dangle those awards, and the whole school gets to go to the Padres ballgame. My schools have gone two years in a row. Yeah, I have to rub it in. I don't know what happened this year, but at least two years in a row, we've, we've had Paradise Hills and Hamilton to win. And we can challenge them and, and expect them to learn something too. It's okay to do that. So I commend you. Thank you, Marisol, for coming back and helping us out at that school. And I know if you need, even for what Faye is going through, the kind of difficulties they've had this year, the area superintendent is out there supporting them, and we're doing everything we can here centrally to support that school. We're about helping our students. Enough said, my sermon for today. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Bazo.
Thank you, President Peterson. I'd like to touch on a little more, both of my colleagues have touched on this, but one of the things I was interested in is finding out, I think probably for future reports, was specifically what Dr. Whitehurst Payne was mentioning, like what, which specific areas are students coming in? And I assume it's going to be a lot of different things. You know, it'll be VAPA, it'll be athletics. But let's say there's a lot of people, a lot of kids that really love chess club. I don't know, I'm just throwing things out there. It's going to be really important to know that information because as we're looking at budget cuts for the future, you know, if there's something that really stands out as a marker, and I think we need to do that for elementary, middle, and high school because it's going to vary, some of the things we might assume might be high on the list, maybe aren't as much. So just to really kind of get, dig down deeper and have a better sense of like, if there's a specific, I don't know, lacrosse, I'm just, you know, saying, I don't have ties to any of those, but just because I think that's important, because we, that's what I've said when we've been in our budget workshops is, are we making sure that we're keeping the programs that we know are going to be most important to these students? Because if we're cutting those out from under us, we're just, you know, that's, we're, that's, that's not going to work for, for our students if we're trying to accomplish a wellness goal. So that would be the first thing. And then I also just want to put in a plug. I've shared this before, but I think it would be eventually, and I don't know if you can speak to this, but to have a health education class at some point? Because at that, because with that, you know, if we do have budget cuts and we don't, aren't able to do some of these programs, you know, we'd have that class in place for, not only to discuss physical wellness, emotional wellness, but environmental health as well. It could just be a place to encompass all of those areas. And I know, again, that's a budget issue, but has there been any discussion about possibly having, you know, this within like classroom content? Or is it just going to be incorporated like kind of across different topic areas? Or, you know, kind of to have like a specific place to discuss some of this?
That's a good suggestion. We haven't formed any sort of class because we're trying to figure out still, like, how do we measure this? What does it mean? More, more than anything, we're trying to figure that out. But that's a really good suggestion. Thank you. I'll make sure to note it. Yeah.
At Maryland's, we have it as part of the middle school wheel. The sixth grade wheel at Maryland's, one of the health education is one of the, one of the four sections that all students take.
Yeah, I've seen it at middle schools in different ways, so yes.
I just think it should be more comprehensive than that because not every student gets that. And if we're talking about really make, being serious about this, would be, I think we'd need to focus time on it.
I just want to add that with the high schools that are moving to the quarter system or the block schedule, it has come up. So it's out there and it's being talked about. I think, you know, you know how it's just, but it's out there and it's being talked about. It's much easier in the middle schools, I think, because of the time they have available. So now that they're seeing some more openings for electives, that, that it's being talked about.
Vice President Barrera.
Yeah, I just so much appreciate this report, and I appreciate you bringing together the developing wellness index with chronic absenteeism. Because, you know, as you've talked about the attendance works research, and by the way, the Hardy and Marshall, your schools are like the poster children for, you know, the best practices research around a lot of things, but certainly reducing chronic absenteeism, everything that you're bringing your teams together, looking at data, the family engagement. I love the opening up the soccer field, you know, example. It's so great. But the reason why it's so important that you're connecting these two points is because we know what the research about reducing chronic absenteeism says. It's, you, you have to get the wellness right in order to reduce chronic absenteeism. So it's the relationships, it's the connectedness, it's, it's student health and safety, and it's family, you know, connectedness. So what I think would be great, you know, what we saw were the chart of schools that have made huge progress in reducing chronic absenteeism, and then the chart of schools that are scoring really highly on the, yeah, exactly. If we could, you know, even look, looking at all of our schools, you know, kind of have a simple chart that looks at both, you know? And over time, I would expect that those two data points will come together, as, you know, trustee Hazen pointed out, as will the academic outcomes. But it would be, it would be great to just kind of see where is a school, and I know we're developing it, but where is a school on the wellness index? Where's the school on chronic absenteeism? And looking at both of those together as you've done in this presentation tonight. Thank you so much. Yeah.
Okay, here in the final stretch here, I've got a few questions and comments here. So I just want to take us back a little bit in terms of where this came from. And the truth is, I can't remember anybody lobbying us on this initially. You know, this was, we were in student outcomes focused governance meetings with, with our consultant council of the great city schools. And when several of the board members insisted, hey, we think wellness is a, is a major issue, our head, the head consultant said, that's actually the holy grail, but nobody's done it yet. So it's, it's a big, that's a big wave to drop into. I don't think he used the surfing analogy, now that it came out of my mouth, it doesn't fit, but that was the effect. And, and we really insisted on it. And we insisted on it for several reasons, one of which I think is informed by our experience, but certainly my experience is, as a parent, what is most important to me. And I think as a district, the concept of in loco parentis is the fundamental task. I mean, people will talk about all the other stuff, but to me, that's bells and whistles. When you are in the status of a parent, you are going to keep that child safe, you are going to ensure that they're not being bullied, you're going to ensure that they feel like they belong, like they matter, and you're going to make them feel, you're going to make them feel welcome at, at a human level. Are they healthy? Are they psychologically well? Are you, as a, as in loco parentis, are you ensuring that their relationships with their peers are supportive and nurturing? So I would say on one hand, without regard of its, to its collateral benefits for the other goals, it is in its, of itself to meet your fundamental job as, as, as a district that is in, in loco parentis, number one. Number two, we wanted to find goals that were high leverage, or interventions that were high leverage. And one of the things that for me, there's always a tendency, when you have a set of goals, to pick, or when you have a set of objectives for a district, to pick goals that are directly adjacent. When you set a goal, the tendency is to intervene directly adjacent to that. So you say, well, our goal is literature, literacy, our goal is math, and then everybody in the district goes, oh, my God, we better focus right adjacent to that thing. But there, in all likelihood, and we know this in our, in our, in our own lives, there are high leverage interventions that are not necessarily directly adjacent to the thing, but have an overall effect. And for, and, and what we see in our very best principals, this is what we see, is principals that create a campus culture, a sense of belonging, a sense of wanting to come to school and motivation. I mean, I, I don't want to pick favorites and I won't say any names, but you go on these sites and it's like, boom, all the kids are saying, are slapping the principal high five, everyone you talk to loves their principal, the kids want to come to class, they feel like they belong. So, and that is, if you were to say, how do we raise literacy on that campus? And someone said, get a great principal. Like, no, no, I want to raise literacy. It's like, bro, that's your highest leverage intervention. You know, you have to figure out what the highest leverage intervention is, and it may not be directly attacking that thing, and it may not be directly adjacent to it. And I think in relation to that, this goal, having it be a goal is part of, is our belief that it is a fundamental responsibility of ours in loco parentis. Having it be the number one goal reflects that we believe this is the highest leverage intervention we can make at, at the level of the central office in order to move everything else. And so I think as we, you know, we may not necessarily in all situations be able to do regression analysis on this thing. So there may be a certain amount of kind of interpreting, whether it's causative or whether it's just correlative. And we may be able to, we may have to make do without that sort of academic regression analysis with, with a correlation. And I think we're going to be very happy if we see that correlation. So I'll just say that. And I want to say that when you adopt a goal that, whose time has come, immediately sense it from families, you sense it from students, you sense it from staff. And I will say that this is one of those goals, when I go to cluster meetings, everybody can see that this is, that the time has come. You know, there is, I had a parent who, I said, our goal, and, and we had this conversation from the DIAS. A former superintendent had said, we're going to do, okay, okay, we're going to do social emotional learning. And what did we say? Whoa, 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 whoa. You're not going to see those huge collateral benefits. It's great, we should do social emotional learning, but you're not going to see big impacts, high leverage impacts on everything else just by social emotional learning. That's why we're focused on wellness per se. And when I, and I talked to a parent, and I may have said this before, I don't think from the DIAS, but this parent was like, I talked about wellness, and he started choking up, big burly guy, not the guy who, he said, you know what? I would have thought what you were saying was nonsense, but I have a 10th grade daughter, and she's had the same group of friends for the last 10 years. And last year, for whatever reason, those five, five friends abandoned her. Something happened between them, and she is alone, and she sits in a room all day, every day. I can't get her to come out. Her grades are suffering. He's like, I wouldn't have believed that wellness was a Rosetta Stone to unlocking all these other things in her life until it happened to me. So I will say, that father in trying to understand what's happening to his daughter is the same problem we all face in trying to assess wellness. And this is why I really want to, I want to simultaneously acknowledge all the staff, work the staff's done, acknowledge that it is very difficult and that it's, it's current, it's incomplete, and we're, and we're getting toward there. And toward that end, look, it's inherently hard to assess wellness. Am I well? Jeez, I don't know. You know, it's like, and ask my friends, ask my family, it's like, it's Rashomon, you know, everyone has a slightly different perspective. I'm okay, I'm, I'm, I'm on, you know, I'm on a good, I'm on a good mixture right now. But so, so it is inherently hard. And when you're dealing with students and staff and families, but let's focus on students, when you're dealing with students, there are obvious limitations in terms of budget, in terms of intrusiveness of your measures, in terms of the desire of students. We heard from students again and again that they don't, there's a lot of data, they don't want us collecting about them. They want us to know if they're well or not, but they, there are limitations to what they want us to know. And I, and we respect that. So there's a whole set of limitations. So I want to honor the work that staff is doing to try to, to try to create this index that is, that both approximates what it is without overstepping the bounds of student privacy and, and other constraints. And toward that end, I want to just clarify, there, there are three distinct things. In terms of approximating wellness, we've got a proxy measure, which is, which is chronic absenteeism. So, okay, we're trying to use that to triangulate where, where students are. Then we've got an approximation, which is our current survey data that we're trying to use. And that's not perfect, but you know, it's very hard, it's hard to gather this data. And then we have the wellness index. My question, and I'll say just two more things, and then I'll go straight and shut up, and it'll all be about your answering the question. If you could sort of anticipate a little bit of what this third part is about, some people have asked me, just in the broadest terms of what this wellness index might look like, that's distinct from a proxy and distinct from a survey, that's, so that's my question. And, but I also want to just clarify, the final thing is to clarify a, a question that's come up several times from people, which is, you're focusing on wellness, what are the investments you're making wellness? And this is, and wellness, and this is similar to what we get around, if you go back to the LCAP, people are like, oh, what are your LCAP investments? And then you're left with this $180 million of LCAP investments. And it's like, that's how much you spent on targeting students? No, 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 we spent all this on the budget over here, but that's just the targeted stuff. So one of the things I want to clarify about wellness is there are certain targeted investments we're making. I think community schools, for example, is, is one of those. There's certain targeted policy decisions we're making in terms of like the four by four block scheduling, to get more, to get more opportunities for electives, to get more room for students to have a choice-filled experience. to have a choice-filled experience, and to have four classes in a given semester rather than six, and that sort of thing, which I think has some collateral benefits on wellness as well. And then we have SBHIP, and to clarify, that's a state, SBHIP and SB, what's SBH, CYBHI? These are state initiatives. We are responding to the state wanting a partner to help with their investments in health and wellbeing. And we're the perfect partner for that. So that's not, certainly not us gaming the system. This is actually a state initiative. We were in cohort one with the state trying to foster our ability to help better serve their needs. So I just want to clarify around that. And to say, this is the final thing I'll say before you answer this question is, the real benefits I see are not this particular program, this site-based program, or this district-based program. It is the diffuse impacts of what it means to have a board and a leadership team, and our area superintendents, and our principals, and our teachers, actually moving in alignment and understanding that they are, we are holding ourselves accountable to this wellness. I hear it when I go in classrooms. I hear it when I go on sites. I hear it from parents. I hear it in cluster meetings. This is a district that believes that wellness is foundational, not only to wellness per se, wellness is foundational wellness, but wellness is also foundational to personal growth, interpersonal growth, to academic achievement, to career and college readiness. We believe that it is foundational to all that. So, and that kind of diffuse impact of what it means as a district and as a leadership team to communicate to our staff and our families and our children that that is our number one goal. It's, I think the impact's profound, and I look forward to seeing that, both in the data around wellness and in our academic data. So with that, just the question around what might this wellness index look like? Sorry to go on a late.
So I'm going to do my best to channel my best Melissa Spaden that I can. But when there, I'm holding two pages of ideas of parts of the index that could potentially be in our final product. And we've divided it in body, mind, relationships, and community. And it is tied to the work that all of the departments are doing currently, and then aligning that with our goals. So when we look at things like body, like, what are we looking at in terms of our food and nutrition program? And it's not just, I know you guys have said this before, it's not just the meals that were, how many meals we're doling out. It's, are the students accessing those meals? Have we seen an increase in it? What kind of choices are they making? And what is our department doing to provide that increase in access, that increase in choice? So that's one of the things we're looking at. I think another thing is, when we talk about mind, a lot of that fits around a lot of different assessments. So MTSS has the SIT assessment, Community Schools has another assessment. I know we have a lot of data around what our mental health providers, who our mental health providers see, and we have a mental health provider district-funded in every school. The kind of data around what our counselors are seeing, the types of groups. You had mentioned clubs. We've got a lot of different clubs through our wellness centers, and then, of course, the activity in the wellness centers. When we look at relationships, there's stuff around conflict management. There's stuff around belonging and mattering, which goes back to surveys. But engagement and meaningful participation, so that can be that kind of data that the counselors see in terms of the referrals that they're getting, for whatever reason, and how we're dealing with that. And then for community, it can be as simple as all of the community services that are available on the sites, but then it can also be access to community, the family engagement events. So that's just a part. And then I think as we start to develop it more, we can give you more specific elements of it.
And that's also a part of what our researchers are helping us with. And so we're compiling all of the information and the supports that currently exist district-wide to see which ones will fit well into the index. But again, that's part of the work that the researchers are doing with the survey questions and working with our partner at the county as well.
I have one more thing. It's also around facilities, too. The community can also mean the facilities that are on the campus. So those facilities fit scores. Those are data pieces that we have for our sites.
All right. Any additional comments from my colleagues? All right, seeing none. Thank you so much. We really appreciate all of you. Thank you. All right. There is no action associated with this item. So we will move to item F1 and F2, related to student discipline and collective bargaining. Is there a motion on these items? I have a motion from Trustee Wires Payne. Do I have a second? Trustee Hazen. We have a motion and a second. Are there any speakers on these items? Okay. Seeing none. Do any of the trustees have any questions or comments on these two items? Seeing none. We will move directly to a trustee vote. Trustees, please vote. That motion passes unanimously. All right. We will now move, are we good? Did I? Oh, yeah, okay. I didn't see, it must have been late. Yeah, okay, yeah. We'll now consider our, we'll now move to the consent agenda, the board consent agenda. Item G1, the board meeting minutes. Is there a motion on the minutes? We have a motion from Vice President Barrera and a second from Trustee Ordas. We have a motion and a second. Are there any speakers on the minutes? Okay. Not a popular topic to comment on, but do any of the trustees have any comments? Okay. Seeing none, we'll move to a vote. Student trustees, please vote. All other trustees, please vote. That motion passes unanimously with student trustees concurring. All right. We will now consider item H4, approval of submission of requests for allowance of attendance due to emergency conditions. Do I have a motion on this? Vice President Barrera, that's Trustee Bazo. I have a motion and a second. Ms. Stoltz, any speakers on this? Okay. Do any trustees want to talk about this attendance forgiveness? Okay. Seeing no additional comments, we'll move to a vote. Student trustees, please vote. All other trustees, please vote. That motion passes unanimously with student trustees concurring. We'll now consider the superintendent's consent agenda, which is items I1 through I23. The superintendent's consent agenda is considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion followed by a vote. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless the board, member of the public, or staff request specific items be removed from the consent agenda for separate discussion and action. Any agenda item removed will be voted upon following the motion to approve the consent agenda. Please note that the agreement for item I23 was not complete when the agenda was published. Copies of the agreement are on the back table for public review. Does the board have any items they would like to have pulled from the consent agenda for discussion? Trustee Hazen, I23, okay. I23 has been pulled.
There's also a public speaker on I4, so you have to...
Come again? I understand. We'll pull I4 then.
Yeah.
Yes. We'll pull, yeah, we'll pull items I, the board has pulled items I4 and I23. Has the public or staff pulled any items for discussion? Oh, I4 also, okay, I see. I didn't, I see, okay. So we have a public comment and a board comment on I4. Okay, so we'll set those to one side, and then we will... Okay, so we've pulled that out. We will now move to, do I have a motion on the remainder of, a motion from Trustee Wires Payne and a second from Trustee Wen. We have a motion and a second. We will now move to a vote on the consent agenda except for items I4 and I23. Student trustees, please vote. All other board members, please vote. That motion passes unanimously with student trustees concurring. We will now move in numerical order to the items that were removed. Ms. Stoltz, would you like to ask the public commenter to speak on item I4?
Yes, I believe we have one speaker from our group from Lincoln High School on I4, which is the agreement with Young and Prosperous Foundation. If you could give us your name, please, so I can keep in the record.
Okay, hi guys. Good evening. My name is Naima Alia Curtis, and I am a senior at Lincoln High School. I have been a part of the Young and Prosperous Foundation since my freshman year, and is currently the class president of Young and Prosperous. The foundation is a nonprofit organization that provides youth with mentorship, we're, sorry, mentorship resources and opportunities to grow as leaders and scholars. Through these, through programs like Scholarship Excellence, Black Girls United, and Student Athlete Mentorship, Young and Prosperous helps students prepare for college, build confidence, and connect with education and with purpose. Their college and career exposure initiatives, such as out-of-state and in-state college shows, open doors to new possibilities. The foundation's impact speaks for itself, achieving 100% high school graduation rate and college acceptance rate among its students, along with significant improvements in attendance across the San Diego Promise Zone. The Young and Prosperous Foundation has played a major role in shaping the person I am today. Through their guidance and support, I was honored to receive the Youth Leader of the Year Award from the 39th Senate District, along with many other meaningful opportunities for growth. I would like to thank the San Diego Unified School District for having, for allowing us to have the opportunity to partner with the Young and Prosperous Foundation, helping, which will help even more students gain access to mentorship, educational opportunities, and life-changing resources that empower them to succeed in and beyond the classroom. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Ordas.
Thank you. I'd just like to take a moment and quickly comment on item I4, because this ratification is crucially important and very close to my heart. As you guys can see, my family is out there. So when I first joined the Young and Prosperous Foundation, and I am still relatively new, but the moment I walked into the first meeting, I felt a strong sense of belonging and saw a loving family. The deep and hard work every adult has greatly done for this foundation is very clear and a beautiful thing. The community services foundation does is powerful and deeply rooted in all communities. They offer not just resources, but mentorship, hope, empowerment, and love for our students as they prepare for their post-secondary journeys. We're grateful for their partnership and the positive impact they continue to have on our young people, and from my experience, they truly care and they truly love. Thank you.
Trustee Wires Payne.
And I want to say that my church has given several of the previous student scholarships, I do believe, as they've gone to various campuses, 11, 12, a number of students. So I commend you all for what you're doing, for helping students, taking them around and preparing them for the future, and thanks for coming. And for, believe it or not, we gave Curtis, we gave her father an award, remember, for classified last year. Her father was the one who received it, and she's following in his footsteps. Congratulations.
Hi. Young and prosperous and old and prosperous. That's very good. Well, does any, do any of the board members have any comments? Oh, but you have your, we'll get to that in a second. We'll take a vote on I4, and then any other comments on I4? Excellent. With that, we will move to a vote. Oh, thank you very much, ma'am. Do I have a motion on I4 specifically? I have a motion from Trustee Ordas and a second from Trustee Wen. We have a motion and a second. We took our comments out of order, so you can superimpose those. With that, we will move to a vote. Student trustees, please vote. Mine was pre-existing. I did not. Okay. Student trustees, please vote. All other board members, please vote. That motion passes unanimously with student trustees concurring. Congratulations. What, I just pressed the button again. It's just too, it's been too long, a week. With that, we will, we're going to have to, we will now move to item I23, which has been pulled by a trustee, but we will first see if there's any members of the public who are speaking on, okay. We have no members of the public. We will move to board comment. Yes, you've pulled it, but we'll get a motion. Do you want to move this item?
Yes, I would like to move this item enthusiastically.
Okay, we have a motion from Trustee Hazen and a second from Trustee Wires Payne. We have a motion and a second. Are there any comments from the public on this? No, we will move to board comment. Trustee Hazen.
Thank you. So this item is our safe parking agreement. I'd like to high-five Vice President Barrera from across the dais. This has been a long time coming, a lot of advocacy from the district, from our board, from council member Elo Rivera, the Housing Commission, and others. And so I just could not be more thrilled that finally, and it really has been after about two years of concerted effort and focus on ensuring that the old Central Elementary could be a safe parking site, that tonight, I expect we will approve our agreement with the Housing Commission, a license agreement, so that they can then subcontract with a provider, and we can provide a safe, stable place for children and families who are living in their cars to be able to stay overnight and receive the support services they need. I think it's fitting that this is on the same agenda, that we were talking about wellness, because we know being able to go to sleep somewhere that is safe, knowing you have the support you need and can get to school without having to worry about what's happening overnight is going to lighten the load of a lot of families. So I'm grateful that we've gotten this across the finish line and can't wait for that program to open up so that we can start supporting kids and families. And I think the other exciting thing is that even though this is temporary, I believe our intention is to be able to take this to other sites. So this will be here until we redevelop the site as affordable housing, but that we can learn from this over the next year and then identify other sites where we can operate safe parking as well.
Thank you, yeah. And I want to, I'd like to thank Vice President Barrera and Trustee Hazen for carrying this, in part because of the Brown Act. It's kind of, they're doing their thing in silence. We don't really know until we see it hit the docket. I also understand, I also want to thank our partners on this, and in particular Jewish Family Services, which, from my understanding, really came in as our white horse on this, knight in shining armor, whatever you call it. And so we want to thank them as well. With that, do we have any more comment? We will then move to a vote. We have a motion and a second. We've had our discussion. Student trustees, please vote. No, mine was already there. It's... I know. I'm a student of life. Student trustees, please vote. All other board members, please vote. All right. That motion passes unanimously with student trustees concurring. That now brings us to non-agenda public comment. We will now receive public testimony, both from folks in the room and online. Ms. Stoltz, have we received any requests for non-agenda public comment?
Yes, we have three, three non-agenda comment requests. Arlene Newbarth. You have three minutes.
The case for teaching disobedience. We talk a lot about preparing children for the future, for college, for careers, for citizenship. But real citizenship is knowing when the rules are wrong. Every democracy in history has depended on people willing to disobey when obedience becomes injustice. Progress has always been driven by those who dared to say no. That courage doesn't appear out of nowhere. It's learned, it's modeled, and it's practiced. And it needs... it's practiced, and it needs to be encouraged in our classrooms. When we punish students for questioning authority, we're not protecting order, we're suppressing, suppressing conscience. Silencing discomfort instead of examining it does not teach respect, it teaches fear. If we teach children to obey, we get obedient citizens. If we teach them to question, we'll get guardians of democracy. Schools are where democracy should live. We must treat every child as an emerging moral agent, capable of reason, compassion, and dissent. That means giving them opportunities to test their own limits in play and social relationships, to debate, to advocate, to challenge unfairness safely, constructively, and proudly. Civil disobedience in its purest form is not rebellion, it's responsibility. It is the heartbeat of every free society. Democracy isn't kept alive by rule followers, it's defended by those willing to say no when power goes too far. When a student refuses to join in bullying, that's civil disobedience. When a teenager walks out to protest gun rights or a current regime, that's civic literacy in action. And when an educator teaches students that rules are not sacred, but values are, that's how democracies renew themselves. Our role is not to demand obedience, but to cultivate discernment, to raise children who can recognize the difference between lawful and just, between order and integrity. Because the most dangerous citizens are not the ones who speak up, they're the ones who've been taught to stay silent.
Genevieve Z.
My child's horrific school injuries did not slip through the cracks. They were pushed because Golden Hill School refused to report the child injury for legal defense reasons, which violates state child endangerment laws. And we need to close this napsy loophole, because this is intentional evasion of the district's legal child abuse reporting obligations. When the principal stopped me from passing out medical education about health risks to children associated with forced retention of bodily waste, she told me I had to go about this the right way, and told me to file a uniform complaint. On October 15th, 2024, I reported the gross child neglect acts of omission to uniform complaints. I described in medical detail the progression of my child's injuries from missing his repeated classroom hygiene facility bullying, including infection, broken skin. I added, quote, "This is a liability for the district and should be addressed for serious injury prevention, mental, emotional, and social health," end quote. Eric responded, quote, "Thank you for reaching out regarding your concerns. I've read through your emails to get a better idea of everything that's been going on. I know the policies surrounding uniform complaints can be a bit confusing, but uniform complaints are for a limited amount of issues. Unfortunately, the issue you described wouldn't fall under the scope of uniform complaints," end quote. He then said, quote, "I would encourage you to continue to work with the site," end quote, and, quote, "Although it seems like you only need to continue working with the school, I'm copying Edith from the district's Investigations Compliance and Accountability Office in case you have any additional questions in the future," end quote. It's a principle the school's supposed to know, the correct reporting agency for child neglect injury. Why was this month's missing victim also sent to uniform complaint? Why is Principal Julia Martinez from Golden Hill School sending parents to uniform complaints instead of directing child abuse victims to proper reporting? Does it have something to do with her and the person who abused my child dressing the same for twins day during the spirit week of the 2324 school year? And does child abuse qualify as a subject that can be resolved at the school site without reporting to authorities? And since the ICA is not the proper agency to report the child abuse, why do uniform complaints and Dr. Bagula send me to the ICA when I clearly asked them what is the proper procedure for reporting child abuse? I needed this info. Are uniform complaints and ICA workers liable for failure to report child abuse after receiving unreported child abuse information from parents and not reporting to the appropriate agencies? Can we change that? Since their only job working for the district's legal team is to try to prove that the child abuse did not happen. I followed up with the ICA trying to document this properly, quote, "What is the procedure for reporting child abuse?" end quote. And, quote, "Can you please send me to the person who can provide the proper procedure for documenting any child abuse at a school site?" end quote. Shaw replied, quote, "You have made it clear you believe child abuse occurred. That is what was investigated as part of your complaint," end quote. But the ICA asked me no questions and wouldn't even submit my pediatrician's letter to the ethics point against the teacher. The ICA repeatedly closed my injury report against the person who injured my child and refused to add any evidence to it. So I asked uniform complaints. Quote, "I'm contacting to follow-up and find out the proper district procedure for when a parent reports illegal activity ongoing child injury in the classroom after reporting through a uniform complaint form at the principal's direction. Student was not injured because of race, sex, et cetera, was something different. Thank you for your help," end quote. Lynn, the UC compliance officer, did not answer and blocked me after this one and only email. This conflict of interests endangers children. We need to force the district's legal defense team out of the child abuse reporting process for parents. Stop the district's dismissal and evasion of child abuse reporting, and prevent legal department meddling to protect child safety and report child abuse properly for student wellness. Thank you.
Mary Davis. You have three minutes.
I'll keep it short and sweet due to the hour. So Mary Davis, government watchdog with the Public Education Oversight Project. One thing, I was looking through your goals, and while you have the communication and literacy goals with the interim goals listed, in the problem-solving and math, it says that they will be defined by July 2025. So if you have done that, if you could please list them. And then the second thing was artificial intelligence. I'm not sure how many people have taken to use it. I'm pretty new, but I found it to be a complete game changer for me. And, but the thing is, is if you have the skills, it can be a force multiplier. I can write a press release, I can write an essay. What I fear is a generation that is going to become a substitute, that they will not have the capacity and the critical thinking. The other issue, I have found it to be frequently wrong. I would say at least every other session or two, I have found a mistake is made. And if you're gonna do this, I would like you to have case studies on AI fails, and you could start with the two lawyers up in Reno, I believe, that are facing disciplinary, if not possible, disbarment, because they relied on AI and it hallucinated. And they were caught, they were told to come before a judge and face the consequences. So we're talking career-ending consequences for reliance on that. Lastly, if we talk about mental health and wellness, I do encourage you to please focus on Abigail Shire's book, The Kids Are All Not Alright, and it's about bad therapy. And what I have seen is a troubling trend of what she calls rumination. And I was so happy she was able to give a name to it. When you tell people to focus on their problem, it puts them in a doom loop. It's one thing to recognize a problem, identify it, come up with strategies, and move on. When you're living in that, and that's why this whole thing about lived identities, lived experience, there's pros and cons, and the cons can be very devastating, that you create this doom loop of thinking. And I think it explains a lot how in three generations, we've gone from storming the beaches of Normandy, 17-year-olds that were storming the beaches, to now needing safe spaces and quiet rooms for ideas that maybe we don't like or disturb me. So I would just really say, let's try to find some common ground. Bring the pendulum back to true resiliency. Sail your ship into the wind and face your problems. That's the message I want for your wellness. Thank you.
That concludes an non agenda comment.
All right. That brings us near to the end of our evening. I just, I think all of the board members now would like to acknowledge our colleague, who is sailing into the winds of her own surgery tomorrow, no, in several days, next week, next week. What's the date? We, yeah. Well, unfortunately, I was told to say it. So we have something to present to you here. I think some people are moving. We love you very much. We are thinking of you. You're in our hearts and our minds. The prognosis is good. We have every faith that it'll work out just fine, safe, safely, and you'll have a solid recovery. But we're thinking of you, and you are a valued member of our beloved community. And with that. We'll get a statement from you on your return. That's what we'll wait for, with bated breath. With that, thank you, everybody who provided input tonight. Thank you to our staff, and to the public, both here in the room and at home, and to the students that presented today. Thank you so much. With that, this meeting is adjourned at, looks like 8:07. The next meeting will be November 18th, 2025. Thank you so much.